Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, June seventeenth. Just a couple of study session items on for tonight. Up first is Director of Finance Kevin Ingles and Jim Hinkle with the, he's the Managing Director of Hinkle and Company here to present the 2023 CAFER and Audit Results. Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I thought I had a couple of slides, but maybe not. We'll go through them. Kevin Ingles, Director of Finance. Also, as you mentioned, we have Jim Hinkle here from our auditing firm of Hinkle and Company. We're going to go through the 2023 audited annual financial statement. I've got a few highlights for you, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Hinkle, and he will talk to you about the audit process and the audit results. So at the close of 2023, the city's total assets exceeded its total liabilities by 251.4 million. That's 122.7 million for governmental activities and 128.7 million for enterprise activities. That's 251.4 million is an increase of 13.3 million compared to 2022. That's roughly a 5.5% increase. Total cost of the city's program increased 14.9 million. That's about a 14.8 million increase. Most of that is related to the city's enterprise-type funds. Total revenues for all city programs increased 5.8 million or about 4.7%. For governmental activities, that was an increase of 1.9 million or 2.3%. And for enterprise-type activities, that was 3.9 million or about 9.3%. So we are required to do an annual audit every year. That's a state law requirement and also in city charter. Also, when we spend more than $750,000 worth of federal funds, we have an additional audit that is specifically for those funds. We spent about 2.8 million in 2023 on federal funds. We also have a little bit of American Rescue Plan Act spending that's still going on, excuse me, and then that requires some additional reporting to the United States Treasury Department. Hinkle and Company did issue us an unmodified or what's known as a clean audit. That I will have Mr. Hinkle talk to you about here in just a moment. Finally, for the highlights on the report, we do submit our report each year to the Government Finance Officers Association, and they do, they have a certificational program. We submitted our 2022 annual report, and it did receive their certification, and that was the fortieth consecutive year that the city has received that certification. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hinkle. He's going to talk about the audit results and the audit process for 2023.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me a little bit of time to come in and describe something as exciting as the audit process. And I'm sure there's a huge crowd for us. My name is Jim Hinkle, and we perform the annual audit. One of the first things we do is update our understanding of the city's internal accounting controls and document those controls. One of the primary things that we're looking for is a segregation of duties. Accounting transaction takes three steps: initiation, approval, and the recording of that transaction in the books and records, and we don't want one person to do all of those things, and that provides that internal control. There are a lot of other control features that go on in the course of the accounting department, and throughout all of our audit work, we are constantly verifying that those control features are operating as intended, such items as approvals of invoices before they are paid, proper account coding documentation and approval, so that the books and records are recorded correctly and things of that nature. We do this for a couple of reasons. One is to help us assess our audit risk in determining our audit procedures, but the other is to look if there are any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. Those are terms of art. A significant deficiency is defined as a design flaw in the system of internal controls that would allow an error to go undetected in the ordinary course of business, and a material weakness would be a significant deficiency that could result in a material misstatement to the financial statements. And based upon our analysis and our review and all of our audit work, we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal controls. That's the answer that you want to hear. We then go to the audit of the financial statements. We use a lot of test of details, which is exactly what it sounds like. We drill down into account balances, and we look at the underlying transactions, and we compare those to supporting documentation such as invoices, contracts, cash receipts, agreements, things of that nature to determine that the account balance is reported correctly. We also do a lot of analytic review where we compare the current year to the prior year, current year to budget numbers, relationships with inside of the financial statements, and we're looking for relationships that we either can't explain or didn't expect, and if we find those, then we do more test of details until we have the required audit evidence. The audit report is what we call an unmodified report or a clean opinion. What that basically means is that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with general accepted accounting principles and provided on a consistent basis with the previous year. That way, when you pick up financial statements from two or three different government organizations, they're all using the same basis of accounting and reporting, and that's what we're opining on. We also issued two different reports within the single audit environment. That single audit refers to the fact that you have one audit that covers both the financial statements and compliance with federal awards. The first one is kind of an overall view. It's called within accordance with government auditing standards. It looks to the question of, does the city have the internal control structure in place to identify which federal programs it participates in and what those compliance requirements are? And while that sounds really, really easy and simple, a lot of the monies are passed through the state and other organizations and not received directly from the federal government, and then you have the question of whether the state has provided that appropriate information that the city knows what they're dealing with. And then if we find any instances of noncompliance in any of our testing on the financial statements or otherwise, we're required to communicate that compliance issue in that report. That is also what we refer to as an unmodified or clean opinion. It does mean that you have the internal controls in place to know what the federal awards are and the compliance requirements, and that we did not find any specific instances of noncompliance. The third and final report is what we refer to in compliance with Uniform Guidance, and that is where we are required to select certain specific federal programs and drill deep down into those programs and look at compliance on every aspect of compliance with that program. We did the ARPA money program this year, and we did not have any instances of noncompliance in doing a detailed, deep-dive compliance testing with that program. So all in all, all three reports are unmodified or clean, and that we did not have any reportable items, whether they are significant deficiencies or material weaknesses on the audit side, or the financial statement side, I should say, or findings in question costs on the federal government grant program audits. So all in all, that is all good. We issued a letter called the Required Communication Letter, where we're required to communicate in writing if certain events occur or that they did not occur, and that we have nothing in that report to communicate. We did not have any difficulties in the course of the audit. We did not have any disagreements with management. We did not have any audit adjustments where we found errors in the books and records that required adjustments due to our audit procedures, nor did we have any what we call past adjustments where we found errors that were not material that we didn't make, but we found errors in the books and records, so we did not have any of those either. All in all, it was a good, clean, smooth audit. At this point, what I like to tell the trustees is, or council members here, is that we as auditors felt like we had open transparency throughout the audit process. Everything that we asked for, we were provided for in a timely fashion. Any supporting documentation, we were provided. We were never kept from any information or refused access to anything. So we felt like we had the ability to ask for and receive any information we felt necessary to perform an audit within our professional standards and were not inhibited in any way. So I think that's very important for you all to know. All in all, I appreciate Kevin and all of his staff. They have a full-time job all year long, and then it comes to year-end, and now they've got to do this extra work and answer all of our questions and provide all of the information that we request, and that's no small feat, but they were very good about providing everything that we needed. So I appreciate him and his staff and all of their assistance to help with the smooth audit. So all in all, very good audit, nothing negative to report, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Hinkle, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you very much, Mr. Ingles, as well. Member Wright, you have the first question.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here and presenting. My question is about the federal or the grant deep dive. Do you only look at the grants that are received from the federal level, or do you look at state, county grants that are received also?
The federal only. The Single Audit Act only addresses federal grants, not state grants or local grants.
Okay, and do you just grab, you know, a couple of them to look at, or how many do you?
Well, no, the Uniform Guidance has a very specific step that you go through. Based upon the dollar amount, you classify it if it's a type A or a type B, and then all type As have to be audited at least once every three years, and then once we select the programs, we have to make sure we have a certain percentage coverage of total expenditures, and that's all prescribed in the federal regulations, and that's what we follow. It's very, very specific.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Any further questions for members of council? Member Pring.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hinkle, for being here tonight. I just am curious about the definition of vacant in Schedule Six. Could you describe to me what that means and how it interplays with that?
Definition of what?
Vacant. So in the, it's in the assessed value and estimated actual value of property in Schedule Six?
I'm not sure I know what Schedule Six is. Is that yours or mine?
That's mine. So I believe you're referring to the property tax schedule. That's, that's a county category. I'm assuming vacant means vacant, vacant land.
So just properties that are sitting out there without ownership?
Probably just undeveloped land. I would guess that's what that means.
Okay. It looked like there was quite a high dollar value assigned to that area, so that drove some of my curiosity.
Yeah, I can ask the county and see what their technical definition of that is.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anything else for members of council? Seenan, Mr. Ingles, Mr. Hinkle, thank you very much again for your time tonight, and yeah, great news on just seeing no deficits or, excuse me, no deficiencies within the report itself. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the second agenda item, we have our Commissioner Kerry Warren-Gully here to discuss the Arapahoe County funding proposal. Good evening, Commissioner. Good morning. It's been that day, huh? Actually, Commissioner, do you mind turning on the mic? Make it green. There we go.
Yeah. Hi there, everybody. Kerry Warren-Gully, and I'm one of the Arapahoe County Commissioners. We do, I do have a slide presentation, but am I, okay. Oh, thank you very much. I'm sorry. Jackie, up, down, up, down. Right? Thank you very much. First of all, I just want to say thank you very much for the time. I appreciate the opportunity to present some information with you all. I'm sure that potentially you all have heard out in community that we are out having conversations, we're presenting to groups, we're bringing forward information about trying to stabilize our funding sources so that we can continue doing, providing essential services. So just for a brief outline of what we're going to talk about tonight, I just am bringing information about kind of the bottom line, what's happening right now with our organization, what our options are to try to solve some of these situations. We have been out in community, talking and polling, and so bringing some of that information to you, and open it up for any questions or comments that you all have. So really, for the past 25 years, the county has been struggling to keep up with the demands that we are seeing, and the reason for that is a couple of different things. All of the things that you all are probably facing right now, and that's a lot of issues around inflationary measures that we're seeing. The county is growing at a very fast rate, and so we are seeing not only growth in our county, but obviously that growth comes with a lot of people that also have needs and desire for services as residents in Arapahoe County. Because we have not been able to really deal with our finances in a very sustainable way up to this point, we are about $316 million in deferred maintenance, and a lot of that deferred maintenance is really around kind of our equipment, our roads, our bridges, those types of things. And again, I know that you all are struggling with these. I'm hearing this from a lot of our municipalities and fellow governments, that we just really are feeling a lot of those pinches from inflationary measures. Right now, what we're trying to do is get to the goal of 85% of our goal, of our county roads, to bring them up to fair or good condition. And I'm sorry, yes, good or fair condition. And we are also seeing some struggles in Arapahoe County because we were beginning to talk about these things pre-pandemic, and once the pandemic hit, obviously that was very difficult for us to be out in community having conversations. But we also did receive, as you all did too, funding from the CARES Act and federal dollars around ARPA dollars. We at Arapahoe County tried very hard to look at these dollars really, truly as one-time dollars. We didn't want to go down the path of, let's start a bunch of new programs with these dollars, that at the end of spending these, we weren't going to be able to continue the programming. So we really focused on one-time spending, as well as the fact that we wanted to be partnering with our community so that they were able to achieve some of their goals as well. So obviously, those dollars are going away, and now we're back to having this conversation with community, and these are really our top primary areas of not only services, but some of our larger departments and the kinds of cuts that we will be seeing in our budget if we were to do nothing at this point. Really, we have, you know, 656,000 residents in Arapahoe County, and the county directly and indirectly pretty much touches all their, everyone's lives. And I always like to say that people come to see the county when it's a good day. Maybe you're getting married, you're excited, you're getting your passport, you're going to go on a fun trip. But it also, a lot of people come to us because they're not having the best of day. They may have lost a job, and so they need assistance, getting food assistance or rental assistance, or maybe someone, a loved one, has had an altercation, and we are providing services to them in our detention center or through our court services. So these are the types of services that we provide. You can see all the types of work that we've been doing and the folks that we are helping, a lot of our safety net programming. And I know a lot of city council members, when I interact with them, they talk a lot about how helpful it is, is that they're be able to refer a resident to them, to us at the county, if they are in need, or they need our Workforce Development Center or something like that to find assistance and have that happen. So how do we deliver our services? A little different, not much different from the way that you all get your funding for your services, but we survive pretty much only on property taxes. We do have one sales tax, that is a quarter of a cent sales tax, and that goes directly to open spaces. So as you all know, those funds are not fungible. We don't get to move them around to different pots of money that may need them. 50% of that, right off the top, at the open spaces, comes to cities and municipalities that partner with us. So you can see that we do a lot of collection of taxation, and then we, through our treasurer, disperse that back out to all sorts of different entities. These are some of the ones that you know of, special districts are obviously cities and towns, and our school districts are one of the biggest folks that rely on our property taxes. So part of the problem that we've run into is that people send their check where? They send it to the Arapahoe County Treasurer, and, but we only keep about 12% of that taxation to provide the services that we have. We have about 500 different taxing entities in our, in our county, and that's everything from little, teeny, tiny water districts all the way up to, as I said, our school districts, parks and rec districts, et cetera. So you can see that we receive about $179 from folks on an average property tax bill. That's about for a $500,000 home, which is about the median price home in Arapahoe County. It's about $32 a month. So because we are not able to keep up with what the demand of our services are, I'd like to tell you a little bit about what types of things we can do, what are our options. We have three options before us. One is, is that we can deal with our property tax. This would not be a new tax measure, but would allow the county to collect and retain all of the taxation that is allowed by Tabor in a pre-Tabor level. So what happens in Arapahoe County is, is that we're a little bit different than the state. Both the state and the county are still constrained by Tabor, our budgets are. The county, the state collects all of that taxation, and then they send that back to us in a credit somehow. So two years ago, we got a check. Last year, we got a credit on our income tax statements. The county doesn't want to have to deal with that. We don't want to deal with the cost of that. So what we do is we decide, we determine how much we can actually collect, and we temporarily lower people's mill levy in order not to collect more than that that would have to be rebated or credited. So if we were to be able to retain the funding that we, to that 15.86 mills that the county has, it would be about $13 a month for the median home. We could also do an additional sales tax in addition to our open space tax. We could also do an additional sales tax in addition to our open space tax, and that money would be able to be used by the general fund to keep up with sustaining services. Or we will have to make cuts next year to our services and continue down the path of deferred maintenance, of deferring our maintenance. So, next year, when we kind of measure out what we think we can collect, we see that we would only be able to bring in about $7 million of new revenue for the county. And that leaves us in a very difficult position of trying to keep up with how are we going to continue to recruit and retain people and be able to keep them at the county, our ability to keep up with our maintenance and to deal with this capital project issue. We also have some new pressures on our budget. I'm sure you all remember the breakup of Tri- County Health. That was not our choice, but it was something we had to go to, we had to do. And we stood up a wonderful and excellent health department that I hope all of you are hearing good things about. I certainly am. That was an additional cost to our budget because we took away some of the inefficiencies of having a three-county budget, a three-county public health department. So, that was $3 million that we weren't anticipating. This year, our judicial district is going through a split, which we anticipate will be between a three and million, three and $4 million additional need of our funds. You all deal with this, as do we, unfunded mandates that come from legislation at the State House. A lot of times for us, that is around measures at the detention center, which are very, very costly for us. And we really have no control over being able to keep up with that. We just have to pay for that. And really, uncertainty in what's going to be happening with some of our statewide measures and the effects of the property tax legislation that was passed over the last two years. So, what we've been out in community doing is trying to have conversation, trying to help people see the services that we provide. Lots of times, people know what their city council does. They know what their school board does. They really don't have a feel for what the role of the county is. So, we see that as our job is to really educate people and what we do. About half of the people that we polled and surveyed said they know what the county does, and the rest of them do not have a feel for that. They also think that the county has the financial means to continue to provide those services. We found that they have three top priorities that won't surprise you. Crime and public safety, road improvements and keeping up with maintenance, and keeping up with affordable housing and providing services for all sorts of different vulnerable populations. We did find in our first round of polling that there was a tendency to like the sales tax method versus property dealing with debreasing. What we found from that was, is that a lot of people really didn't understand what that component meant. So, that's probably, that's a lot of why we're out in public, in community and having conversations and asking people for their input. You can see how many surveys we've done and polling that we've done. We are finding that in general, people are very satisfied with what the county has done and their experiences with it, and that public needs are being met. And that indicates to us that we do need to do a better job of helping people understand these issues and why our goal is to really highlight sustaining those essential services. These are the different types of community outreach we've had. We've been visiting groups. We've been out talking with people. We have a website, acbudget.com, that gives a lot of really great information on it and just a lot of opportunity for people to be asking us questions. We're currently out visiting with our municipal partners, like we are this evening, answering questions that you all might have because we know that people will begin to start asking you questions as, as we are out in community talking about this. As I said, we do have a website. It has a couple of interactive portions of the website that gives people the opportunity to kind of indicate to us where they would like to see additional funding spent. But it also has a property tax calculator on there so that you can actually put in your value of your home and see what your, your increases would be or what the implications of that would be to your bottom line. Let's see here. I did want to highlight that, and I kind of skipped over that. In Inglewood, they were pulling up, because I've had a lot of council members say to me, Kerry, what does this mean specifically for us? And let me see if I can find that back in my notes. My apologies. We do have a slide on that, and I'll go back really quick. These are some of the specific items that are, are meant, that would, would be affected in Inglewood, here in Inglewood specifically. We see about 120 cases on any given day for our child and adult protective services from the county, just in Inglewood, and about 804 cases of childcare and food assistance programming that we do. The sheriff's office does provide partnership in providing certain, certain types of services. We do a lot of investigations. We do your domestic violence work. We also do a lot of community engagement opportunities. I know SWAT, BOB Squad, all of those things come alongside each other to work in cooperation when there is a need. We do support the Inglewood Chamber through our, our economic development partnerships, and we do prevent, we do support a lot of nonprofits in the community as well. I'm thinking specifically about Interconnected Family Services that does a lot of food assistance types of programming. And we have a small grant type of program that people can apply for. That obviously would, would be something that would be hit. We also will see reductions in the ability for our public health department to do a lot of the work that they do around childcare inspections, our restaurant inspections, and some of our safety harm measures that we have in place, vaccination programming and sexual health. So, those are just a few specific things that we could think of as people would see and feel the effects of in Inglewood. So, that's everything, and I appreciate your time. I'm happy to answer any questions. And we also brought some materials that, that maybe we can give to Jackie, and it's kind of a one pager that goes through this at a very high level. And you certainly can go to our website as well.
Commissioner, thank you very much for the presentation. I'll open up questions. Anybody want to kick us off? Go ahead, Member Ward.
I'm not sure if this is the big piece or the small piece, but this is the bite I'm going to take first.
Okay.
Just a note on the property tax request. The first line of this says, "Not a new tax." I differ on that perspective. My perspective is, anytime the government finds itself pulling money from my pocket that otherwise wouldn't be coming from my pocket to the government, that is a tax increase. So, why don't we just go straightforward and say, "We're debreasing the city." You may see some payment, other, or the county, you may see some payment that you wouldn't see otherwise, but it allows us to establish some rainy day fund. It allows us to fill some gaps that we otherwise wouldn't be able to fill by growing the size of the county government larger than it would be allowed to grow under Tabor. That's a very honest, straightforward perspective that discloses what we're actually doing here instead of what looks like a wolf in sheep's clothing to me, frankly.
I appreciate that, Councilman. And what I would say is, is that we are allowed to collect, I mean, we have a property tax rate of 15.86 mills. We are not asking to raise that. We're not asking to make that higher. So, I get what you're saying, and we are, we are trying to talk to people about debreasing, although that is terminology that some people are not familiar with. So, we're trying to tackle it from a lot of different angles. But I understand what you're saying, and we've gotten that feedback before. But that's, that, I guess that's my response is, is that our tax rate is 15.86. Because we temporarily lowered it, it was 11.2 last year. So, that's what we're talking about, is it's not increasing it above the 15.8.
And just to make sure that we, I don't want to belabor it, but what happens to the extra four mills now if the county decides to charge it?
If we are, if, if our taxpayers agree that we should debruise and collect the full amount?
No. There's enough, you said there's an authorized tax of 15.8, I think it was, mills right now. If the county decided to just collect that full 15.8 mills every year now, what would you have to do with the difference between the 15.8 and the 11?
We'd have to give that year's taxation back, which is why we temporarily lower the mill levy.
I think that's the message. You're asking the voters to authorize you to keep that money instead of returning it, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that that's what, if we were to move forward with this, it would say something to that effect, that can't, you know, are we able to retain the funds that we are, that we can collect?
I have some additional comments, but I'll, I'll let my fellow peers go first.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Wright.
Thank you. Hi again.
Hi.
How are you?
Yeah.
I guess I have a couple of questions on the same thoughts of Member Ward. First of all, to debruise, would the voters have to vote in order to do that, to get rid of Tabor in Arapahoe County?
To do either the top two choices, whether that's a debruise or a sales tax. That has to be a ballot initiative that the voters would choose.
Okay. And, and then, as I was reading the PAC, one of the first thoughts that went through my mind is, how many properties in Arapahoe County are actually worth only $500,000?
Well, they're saying this is our median price. So, that's why we have on the, we do have some that are lower than that, certainly some that are much higher than that. That's why we have on our website where you can go in and type in your actual value from your property tax statement to see what the effect would be on your property value.
It's, I know in this area, $500,000, if you found something. Yeah, it's a rarity. And, and one of my questions, and I'll, I have several, and I'll let the next person go before I ask more, is what was being done pre-ARPA money that was being given to the counties, to the cities and stuff like that? Because, you know, those were one-time or, you know, split into two payment funds that, you know, were not guaranteed, weren't expected. And I know it was a lot of money for a lot of different cities and counties and stuff like that. And now, all of a sudden, when that money's drying up, people are like, oh, no, what are we doing? So, it just, I think people relied on it much more than they should have, so I guess.
Well, what I would say is this discussion was happening pre-COVID or pre-pandemic. So, this is not a new discussion for us. Internally, we've been having this discussion for quite a while. And what I would say is because of the pandemic and because of the additional funds that we received to give services to people that needed food assistance or, you know, people that needed to have emergency housing assistance or anything like that, we had funding to do that at a much higher rate because of those funds. What we're finding is, is that our, our needs are still significantly higher than what they used to be, pre-COVID.
So, it was a longer lifeline type of thing?
Yeah, yeah. So, what we're seeing is, is that those needs didn't go away after COVID, but the funding did. So, that's some of the, the interaction of, say, federal dollars that support our human services and community and resources departments that we have just not allowed us to keep up with that. There's also opportunities for us to be able to receive some of those funding dollars continued, but we have to come up with a 20% match as a county in order to receive those funds. And at some point, we don't have the general fund dollars available to make that match. So, that's true of our human services department as well as our transportation. You know, there's a lot of money right now out there with bipartisan infrastructure bill and such. We don't have the funds to, to go for those matches.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
It does. It does. It makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Member Russell.
Thank you, and thank you for coming to present to us. I appreciate the statement that you did not want to start a lot of new programs with one-time dollars. Did you start any new programs with one-time dollars?
We started one program, which was our Housing Navigator program to, but it was started as a grant-funded program. So, we did not take on any new FTEs for programming. When we hired folks for that program, it was a three-year program that were hired as, as grant employees. So, we, and that program is kind of, we have housing navigators that are out in community, like in libraries and other places, because we wanted to see if we were able to provide better services by being in community versus people having to go to a county building or something like that to sign up for programming. But that was very specific and strategic that way, Councilwoman, because of that very reason.
Okay. And then, I have another question. I have some comments, but I'm going to wait till we're done with the question time. Instead of, instead of putting cuts to essential services, because that tags people's heartstrings.
Yeah.
Why don't you put "cut spending without cutting essential services"?
Say it one more time.
Cut spending without cutting essential services.
That, and I, I appreciate that. That is something, the conversations that we are having internally with our, our folks. I mean, obviously, we've asked them to do a budget cut. Last year, we asked them to reduce by 5% what that would look like. This year, we've asked them to do a budget that would reduce their budget by 10%. So, that's what we're trying to highlight here. Are these, some of these services are mandated services that will just, they won't go away, but they're not going to be as robust or as timely as they might have been.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, and I'll have some more comments later. Thank you.
Commissioner, just a quick question for me. I think I'm still a little bit confused. So, that first one, the county property tax, is that a full debruise or is it not a full debruise?
That is a, a full debruise, yes, of our general fund dollars, yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner. Member Prank.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here tonight. So, in looking at the services specific to Inglewood, 120 cases a day were addressing for child and adult protection incidents. Is that the norm across the county? That seems high to me. And then, I guess a follow-up question to that would be, so if you have to reduce your responsiveness to those incidents, what do you typically see happen with those families? Are people calling into city police departments to try to get help?
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that some of that happens still today, I mean, already, right now, because people aren't sure where to have those directed. What I would say is, is that our biggest partners with a lot of the work that we do around child protective services, at least child protective services, is through our school districts. And so, they would just see reduced response time, or it's possible that we wouldn't have the capability to provide as many wraparound services for the families in a, in a timely manner. Clearly, this is a mandated service for us. So, it is, we would never, ever leave a child or an adult in an unsafe situation. However, some of our follow-up procedures or some of our ability to provide true services to get them to a point of where they're able to be financially stable and all of those good things, it, it might take longer to get to that point just because of our, our lack of number of people that would be able to be working on cases.
Okay, thank you. And also, so with these cases that are called in, do your wraparound services keep people placed in their homes? So, versus us having to do removals from homes, we're getting supports into the home itself to try to keep the family intact?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, clearly, if there is somebody in danger, there, there are situations, and we work with our legal system and everything to make sure that that's all done in a proper way. But I would say that a lot of the calls that we get from school districts, from churches, from other organizations that are mandatory reporters, our doctor's offices, for mostly those are who we receive information from on adult concerns. Those, those cases- Those, those cases, a lot of them, I'm just gonna use an example of, of a school district calling in. They may not know where else to turn. If they have a child that is consistently not showing up or not showing up on time, they may be wearing summer sandals in the middle of a snowstorm, or the children, they can clearly see that they, you know, that they're not eating as well as they could be. And a lot of times, those calls are not determined as, you know, they're not neglect or harm. These are, these are programs in which we try to have preventative services in place so that we're, we're not removing them from a home for that. We're, we're, we're working with them, we're working with the school district to make sure, do they have food? Have they signed up for all of the programs that we have available for them? Can we connect them to nonprofit partners in the community that can also support them? So the majority of the calls we get don't ever reach the level. It's a very small portion of, of actual removals.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Member Noonan Camp?
Yes? Yes.
Do you then consider the third option of the budget cuts?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't know if I saw this in the materials or in your presentation, but for the sales tax, when is the last time that the county raised sales tax?
We asked the county, the residents twenty-five years, was it twenty-five or twenty? Twenty years ago for an open space tax. Now, we have those, that has gotten sunsetted, so we've asked them to continue that tax without letting it sunset. But that was the last time we asked for a sales tax.
And so, do you know the last time there was like a general fund tax? That wasn't specifically just for open space?
We did in 2019 ask for a, a bond measure for a detention center.
Okay.
But that's it in the last twenty-five years.
Okay, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Go ahead, Member Wright.
I do, I just have one more question.
Yeah.
Has there been an option looked at or in addition to that when we're getting our license plates to increase or add a, I hate these, a tax added to it to help with these services? Especially when it comes to the sheriff and public works? Because that directly, you know, you're on the roads and safety there.
Yeah, yeah. I believe that that's purely the purview of the state legislature, but I don't know the answer to that. I do know, I don't think that we have considered that at the county level because I, I think it is a state purview. But let me, we can find that out, but I think it's a good suggestion.
Looking at, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. Did, remind me, did the detention center geo-bond pass?
It did not.
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
Any further questions for members of council or any comments that we want to make? Go ahead, Member Russell.
I would like to make a comment about some things. I know that the City of Inglewood, and this impacts you also with our Tri-Cities homelessness issue, did use ARPA funds to pass things that we now cannot afford. And it looks like you can't either. They should have never been passed to begin with. And the other issue that I have is that Sheridan and Littleton want to partner with us, but we're all getting the homeless here. Nobody's getting their fair of this homeless people. And so I think that's one thing that needs to be looked at. We didn't have the money to begin with. I think we're struggling right now, and I think we need to readdress that issue. So I would appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Ward?
I think from my perspective, if I'm going to put myself in a place where I'm going to encourage the voters of Inglewood to vote for something like this, it has to start with honest messaging from the start. I made reference to this a little bit earlier, but increasing somebody's taxes while simultaneously telling them you're not increasing their taxes, that's not a good foot to step off of for me. It makes it that much more difficult for me to believe that any of these things would affect City of Inglewood. We're on the far west portion of Arapahoe County. We are a home rule city. We don't derive a lot of benefit from county law enforcement services or some of these other services that would be adversely affected should it be a no vote, in particular, the public works projects. If you don't drive in east Arapahoe County, what does the road condition there matter to you, really? From an honest perspective? So I, I would like to see the messaging changed to say, you know, we, we all live in this county, we all have a part in this county, and this is what we actually plan to do, and this is why we need it. Instead of a sales pitch that kind of says what we're doing, but doesn't give the full, honest, unvarnished perspective that this is indeed actually a tax increase. So that's all I have on it, thank you.
Thank you for your feedback.
Anyone, Member Russell, go ahead.
Can I just ask one other question? So I know that you hire out services to certain cities, like Arapahoe County Sheriff's Office does the police work in a few municipalities. Have you, have you talked about raising their rates and making them pay their fair share? I mean, cities like us, the police department is the lion's share of our budget. And so I think some of those other cities should be held to that accountability, and we, the rest of the municipalities shouldn't have to share in that burden.
Well, that is absolutely true, and that is taken care of. I mean, the City of Centennial and the City of Bennett absolutely pay for their services, and it's a contractual agreement that is looked at every single year, and there are raises in that contractual agreement. Sometimes we say, you know, they will actually increase their services different than the types of services that we provide as a county sheriff's office. So all of that is in a completely separate situation, paid for in a completely different manner. Now, I will say that, as I mentioned before, there are services, like our emergency response services. Those are all services that the county does work in association with your own police departments and such. So those services, depending on what the municipalities want, they, they may have to pay more, or it is in partnership with the county. So I, I, I understand completely what you're saying, and we absolutely are making sure that, that no county funds or budgetary implications from that.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I appreciate where you're coming from. We're facing the same things, but the interesting thing is the citizens are struggling with a high inflation rate, and they're struggling for money also. And I think we need to be careful about spending their money as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you very much, Member Russell. And this is the reason why it's such a hard decision for the county. So anytime that you are asking for a sales tax increase or potentially de-brusing, I'm happy that you're considering the de-brusing aspect of it, because I think members of the public need to understand that we're one of the few counties that haven't de-brused yet. Majority have, and so I like the fact that we're considering that option or the county's considering that option, because a lot of the services that you speak to, especially within Inglewood, we partner quite closely with you. And so for us to potentially see cuts in some of the services that we're providing for those lower-income families or just the, obviously, the unhoused with the tri-cities, you know, we had to raise our sales tax a couple of years back just to, you know, provide additional services for safety within our police department. So these are very tough decisions. We're gonna see an impact if there isn't any type of increase, if you do have to go down the route of, of, of not providing those levels of services. But I, I, I'm hopeful that we're able to provide the messaging that makes it pretty clear to at least the citizens of Inglewood, as well as just Arapahoe County overall, that we are seeing a benefit. We, we receive open space tax or benefits from you every single year. So I'm, I'm happy that you're considering these options. I know it's not an easy decision for the county to, and the commissioners to decide which one to move forward with, but me personally, I feel that de-brusing has been a long time coming. I'm hoping that we seriously consider that option. I'm, I'm sure you got your polling that states one or the other is more likely to pass. But yeah, just, I, I'm, I'm happy that we're having this conversation and hoping that both options are being considered strongly. So, thank you, Commissioner.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate your all's time, your honesty and candor with me. That's why we're out here doing this. So I appreciate it, and I really do appreciate the partnerships that we have together. I think we do a lot of great things together. So have a good rest of your meeting.
Commissioner, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for presenting, and good luck to you with the decisions that you decide to move forward with here.
Okay, yes. Yes, just to clarify, we have not made a decision at this point, even if we are going forward, but we're to the point where we need to do something. So we will let you know what that, when, when it's time to make that decision. And as we said, you know, this is why you go to the voters.
Yeah, we're with those timelines.
With them.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, we are, at six fifty-five, we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll come right back at seven o'clock. Thank you. Members of council, if you could please be seated. Members of council, if you could please be seated. All right, everyone, we are now back. I call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. City Clerk, if you could please take a roll call.
Yes. Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Present.
Member Noonan Camp.
Present.
Member Prang.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
Member Wright.
Present.
Mayor Sierra.
Present.
All seven members present.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5. Minutes from the regular City Council meeting on June 3rd. Any changes?
Yes, please.
Yes, Member Wright.
Under consideration of previous minutes, it shows that 5/4, but there was actually six that were four.
On the consideration of the minutes.
Yeah, under number five.
All right. So, it should be 6/0.
Yes.
Perfect. Can we make that change, City Clerk?
Yep, and we'll vote for these as amended.
Perfect. Any other changes? If not, can I get a motion to approve as amended by Member Wright?
To approve the minutes as amended for June 3rd.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Prang.
Aye, or Epstein, I'm sorry, I wasn't here.
Member Anderson. Sorry, Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
At the record show, seven ayes.
Point of order.
Yep.
I do believe we can't abstain even if you weren't, even if someone wasn't present, by a charter.
That's correct.
You have to vote either way.
Correct.
That is correct as well. So, if you wouldn't mind, any Member Prang's name.
Member Prang.
Aye.
So, seven ayes.
Perfect. And now, moving on to Agenda Item 6A. This is recognition of Communications Department for receiving two National Association of Government Communicators Award for Excellence in Communication. They were honored in two categories, the grassroots marketing campaign for uniquely Inwood and crisis communications plan for the collaboration with Arapahoe County. These awards are a testament to our team's dedication to outstanding government communication efforts on a national scale. The uniquely Inwood campaign highlights what makes our city a special place to live, work, and play. It celebrates our small-town feel, diverse restaurants, expansive parks, and vibrant downtown. The award-winning crisis communication plan developing collaboration with Arapahoe County ensures efficient communication during crises, bolstering our city's preparedness, and optimizing our response strategies. These recognitions reflect Inwood's innovative approaches to engaging our community and an unwavering commitment to maintaining clear and effective communication. Let us all extend our congratulations and gratitude to our communications team for their hard work and dedication, their effort to help make Inwood an exemplary city for all who call it home. And I know that we have a few members of the Communications Department, if you wouldn't mind coming up and just taking a quick picture, but congratulations on all your work with the two campaigns last year. All right, everyone, we are now moving on to 6B. This is resolution appointing members to various boards, commissions, and committees. If you look at the attachment, we assign members of the public to specific boards and commissions. So, any comments before getting a motion to approve the resolution? If not, can I get a motion to approve the resolution 6B?
I need to approve Resolution 6B.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Any comments? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Prang.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
At the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you so much. Moving on to recognition of scheduled public comments. Let's see here. The deadline to sign up to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by 5:00 PM. Prior to the meeting through the City Clerk's office, this is an opportunity for the public to address City Council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue, and please limit your presentation to five minutes. Tonight, Member Wright will be giving a response to public comments. Up first is Kathleen Bailey, an Inwood resident here to address council regarding the need for 25-year reign of incapacity infrastructure. Good evening, Ms. Bailey. If you could just state your name and your address across streets.
Kathleen Bailey, Jason and Union. Good evening, fellow Inwood residents. Every year, more and more fellow Inwood residents are learning the hard way through your own experiences and your own neighborhoods that the least important thing to the city leadership and City Council is you. Next meeting, I will continue addressing flood risk. Tonight, I want to directly address the egregious indifference and disregard shown to our own Inwood residents who have come here with valid safety concerns, meeting after meeting. CM Lewis spends $1 million annually for private security to protect himself, staff, council, and their cars from homeless population. Yet, each and every one of you beneficiaries of CM's massive investment sat at that dais while family after family, meeting after meeting, shared alarming experiences and valid safety concerns from the chronic homeless addicts and chronic homeless mentally ill population that are collecting in their R-1C single-family neighborhoods to get services from 5280. And you responded to our own Inwood residents who mistakenly thought you would care with indifference, criticism, and basically almost blamed them for living where homeless get services and expected them to just get used to it. I have four questions that I hope will be publicly answered sometime tonight. Question one, are safe distances from school laws being ignored concerning 5280 and R-1C? If so, I demand that this city immediately enforce their own safety laws and that 5280 cease providing homeless services. Question two, why wasn't 5280's activities in a single-family zone, R-1C neighborhood restricted from the beginning to only providing services to young individuals who age out of the foster system? Question three, last meeting, a justifiably frustrated, repeatedly ignored R-1C resident declared that they would fight against the 5280 PUD. Is this CM and Community Development Director seeking to take advantage of an opportunity to legalize a precedent-setting first PUD in R-1C under the guise of serving the homeless? Question four, on the agenda tonight, why are the beneficiaries, community development, and self-serving council members, allowed to present a motion to waive building fees for organizations like Joe Anderson's buddies Change the Trend, in order to grab state and federal grant money for their own income benefit and build even more structures, creating more PUD opportunities where they are currently not allowed under the guise of caring for the homeless, and in doing so, inflicting on even more Inwood family residential neighborhoods across our city what is currently being inflicted on Inwood R-1C families near 5280? And I noticed in reading this community development PDF that the non-resident staff had the audacity to declare that their request's connection to the plan is community well-being. How dare you? You don't even live in our communities. Our Inwood families living near 5280 are definitely not experiencing any sense of community well-being. I demand that if staff and council want to build more structures for homeless services in our small residential city, that they be required to place this on a ballot measure so that we, the actual Inwood families living here, can decide what's best for our own community well-being. Finally, tonight, I offer an option for consideration for citizens, a citizens' initiative petition to change our current City Council City Manager, former government, to a citizen-elected full-time governing executive mayor, former government. Not only would it remove the existing position of the full-time-employed executive city manager who does not answer to the Inwood residents and who does not have term limits, and replace that position with a full-time-elected governing executive mayor who would answer directly to all of us every three years or every three to four years through the ballot box. This elected executive mayor, former government, also relegates the entire part-time seven-member, it's not our job we trust staff to do at City Council, to only a supporting role, not a governing role. City Mayor, which is actually council chair and only a ceremonial mayor, will be the chair of the supporting part-time seven-member council, which would also provide a third delightful benefit of finally eliminating the suffering through the stupid backstabbing competition among our part-time council members vying to be dubbed ceremonial mayor. If interested, catch me at a council meeting and we will talk later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey, for your time. Any questions for members of council? Seeing none, thank you very much, Ms. Bailey. Up next is Jake Gilbert. Well, PJ Kolnick is not in attendance tonight, so we are moving on to Jake Gilbert. So, sorry about that. Mr. Gilbert, here to address council.
I have some slides.
And Mr. Gilbert, if you're able to state your name and your address across streets.
Yeah, Jake Gilbert, and that's Chinnango, Delaware. Hi, thank you for having me. I would like to speak again about the proposal in the Parks and Rec Bond to convert swaths of turf in parks to native plantings. I work as a conservation planner. My job title is vegetation management specialist. A major aspect of my job is managing native planting projects. I design seed mixes based on ecological site descriptions published by the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is a branch of the USDA, and I manage the contractors that implement the plantings. The reason I'm saying this is so that you understand that my opposition to native plantings in parks isn't based on something I saw on Facebook. This is my field of expertise. Installing native plants in the right places is a great thing, but municipal parks are the wrong place to do it. Kentucky bluegrass and other conventional turf grasses need to be watered and maintained, but they're common in parks for a reason. They withstand traffic. Kids can run on them all day and sports can be played on them, and they won't die. By contrast, Colorado native grasses do not withstand traffic. Buffalo grass, grammonoids, wheatgrass, none of these withstand traffic. If walked on repeatedly, they will die. Dense areas of wildflowers are also not usable for anything other than being looked at. The Parks Department knows this and that is why they've made it clear in maps, social media posts, and communications with me that they have deemed these areas, quote, "passive areas," and plan to deactivate them for use and install a footpath or two for native plant viewing. So, it's also worth considering how these native planting projects will ultimately turn out. In my correspondence with Parks Staff, Depot Park was held up as an example of successful native plant installation. As it turns out, Depot Park has not gone well under Parks Department management. So, I took this photo the other day of a roped-off native planting area about two years after installation. Behind the sign telling patrons to keep out and stay on the path, the native planting area in many ways resembles a vacant lot. It's been taken over by cheat grass, which is an invasive, highly flammable, state-listed noxious weed. Here's a view of that same native planting area from behind the ropes. Cheat grass infestations are extremely difficult to treat. It's a prolific seed producer, spreads aggressively, and mowing it or pulling it will not get rid of it. When cheat grass gets established, the standard treatment is to use an herbicide called Endazoflam, which lingers in soil for up to four years, preventing germination of any plant seeds in the hopes that perennial grasses can regain a foothold. In a nearby flowerbed, I took this photo of a large patch of Canada thistle, ready to flower and spread its seeds. Canada thistle is a List B invasive Noxious Weed. It's covered in spines, and like cheat grass, you cannot pull or mow it. Its roots go six feet underground and survive the winter, spreading aggressively year after year. The only realistic way to get rid of Canada thistle is with herbicides. Needless to say, noxious invasive weeds are not good for the environment. They aggressively invade neighboring properties, they eliminate wildlife habitat, degrade the soil, and can even be poisonous to animals. And unfortunately, many of them cannot be pulled and require regular applications of herbicide to keep them in check. Noxious weeds are a reality of the modern urban world, and no matter how native these plants may be, they will not exist in a 19th-century meadow. The notion that they need little-to-no maintenance is false. Depot Park raises serious concerns about how future native plantings would be managed by the Parks Department. And finally, here's a photo of a so-called passive area within Rotola Park that the drawings published by Parks suggest for turf conversion. It's pleasant, it's shady, it's open for use. There are no noxious weeds, and you can run around on it all day without damaging it. The proposal would replace this wide-open shaded area with plantings that, at best, you cannot walk or play on. And the situation at Depot Park suggests that this turf conversion will just introduce intractable noxious weed problems that we don't currently have. So, to circle back to the beginning, please understand that native plantings will not stand up to park traffic, and they will not be usable for recreation. Every square foot of land converted from turf to native plantings is a square foot lost for normal park use. Please consider removing native plantings from the bond proposal, or at least reducing them to the most marginal areas like flower beds. Let's make improvements to our parks and not break them. Thanks.
Mr. Gilbert, thank you very much for your time tonight. Member Russell has a question.
Mr. Gilbert, so are you suggesting that these gardens with native plants at some point could become very high maintenance?
Yes.
Even more high maintenance than Kentucky bluegrass?
Yes, and that in fact you might find yourself needing to put a lot of really gross herbicides on them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Member Wright?
And for my clarification, what you're showing at Depot Park, is that native plants or are they native weeds?
Well, they're invasive weeds. Those areas were intended, what the sign says is like, this is a native prairie garden. The sign was put up around two years ago, judging by Google Street View, and what's there now is mostly cheat grass, which is not native. It's an invasive, it's called the weed that won the West. It's a List C Noxious Weed, and as a matter of fact, under the Noxious Weed Act, which is a state law, whoever owns the property with the noxious weeds is legally obligated to treat them.
Okay, so it's not even a native plant at this point?
No, not at all.
Okay, so, and this runs into that, what is it type of thing? Some might think it's a native plant, but it's really a weed and it runs into that, what is it? So, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Member Russell again?
Thank you. Just one more question. Have you presented that information to the Parks and Rec Board?
To the Parks and Rec, sorry?
To the Parks and Rec Commission.
Not specifically, well, I haven't spoken to the, I've spoken to Parks Staff. I haven't given a speech to the commission, and I haven't spoken to them about the weeds that I've found.
I think it might be a good idea for you to address the Parks and Rec Commission with that same information you shared with us tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll think about it, yeah. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no further questions, Mr. Gilbert, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes scheduled public comment. We're moving on to unscheduled public comments. I have 11 names in front of me. Up first is Brenda Hubka, here to speak about a splash pad at Miller Field. Good evening, Ms. Hubka.
Good evening, hi.
If you could just state your name and your address across streets.
Brenda Hubka, Foxham-Jefferson Streets. Right, okay, thank you for your time. Yes, I'm here to advocate for the splash pad at Miller Field. You'll be just making some decisions about whether we move forward with the Parks Bond and what's going to be in it. And I have four good reasons to include this splash pad. I know some people were, some of the council members were considering removing it. The first is that a number of you mentioned that you would like a public pool for everyone to use, and I'm going to advocate and tell you that the splash pad is much more cost-effective versus a pool. I was able to meet with Christina Underhill, and a pool costs about, in excess of about a million dollars to build. The splash pad is $350,000 in this bond. It provides a free water venue for citizens who may struggle with the cost of living and housing, and offers a recreational option for families and children who are living in the apartments surrounding Miller Field. It is a central location and has a great community impact. Miller Field is centrally located and serves underrepresented citizens in the existing subsidized apartments in addition to all of us who live in single-family residential homes in this area. Now, this area is bordered by Oxford and Broadway and Hampton and Santa Fe. So, let's talk about safety and why people cross those streets to go to other parks. And that's because there's not a lot of amenities at Miller Field. I know you're considering a playground, and that's reasonable. Keep in mind that those kids who are older than that, that don't want to go to a playground, and something like a splash pad would suit those children much better than, of course, a playground. Keep in mind also that in this area I just described, there are 300 new units approximately coming online in the next two years. And that's not just apartments, that's luxury townhomes, that's condos, that's a lot of people who are going to be in that square area. This would also help with crime reduction because it discourages with all, when you bring more people to the park, it discourages bad actors from being in the park. And of course, it's about equity and community development. You know, historically, minority populations and renters have had limited access to city parks. Making Miller Field a crucial space for diverse communities to engage in, particularly the use of a free splash park. And I'm about out of time, but I want a special shout-out and thank you to the Utilities Department for street cleaning and sending an engineer to my block, by the way, for some drainage issues. That is about, I think that's my three minutes. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your time, Ms. Hubka. Any questions for council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time.
All right.
Up next is Charles Downey, here to- Up next is Charles Downey, here to speak about, uh, ethical tech, I believe. Good evening, Mr. Downey. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Good evening, uh, Charles Downing, 5200 Block Broadway. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, again, thank you for the privilege of addressing you in this, uh, place, and I appreciate the opportunity to express my constitutional rights, and I know everybody else here does as well. Today, I'm here to discuss an ordinance that I'd like for you to, uh, implement in the city of Inglewood that is critical for our community's future. It is the Ethical Use of Technology Ordinance. Because as technology evolves, it is vital to set clear bound, boundaries to ensure it serves humanity ethically and responsibly. Recently, the city and county of Denver implemented license plate readers, introduced as tools to enhance police services. However, such technologies raise significant concerns about surveillance and privacy. This ordinance aims to address these concerns. The exact text of the ordinance that I'd like one of you to propose goes as follows: Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Inglewood, Colorado, that a machine or mechanical device may not harm or kill a human being under any circumstances. A machine may not carry or use a weapon. Furthermore, human beings have the right to be free from surveillance and to refuse any order issued by a machine. The data collected by machines shall not be retained, sold, or used without the expressed permission of the person whose image or data has been captured, end quote. Why we want this? First, it prohibits machines from harming humans or using weapons. Anybody that can look at the Geisha robots from Boston Dynamics and not see a Terminator hiding inside of them hasn't watched enough Arnold Schwarzenegger movies. Second, it affirms the right to be free from unwarranted surveillance. Technologies like Denver's license plate readers risk encroaching on our personal freedoms. After all, they record our location with a time and date stamp. That goes against the freedom to assemble. This ordinance assures that we maintain control over our personal lives. Perfect. This ordinance also emphasizes data privacy. Any data collected by machines must not be retained, sold, or used by business partners without explicit permission protecting our personal information from exploitation. And it grants individuals the right to refuse orders from machines, preserving human dignity and agency and ensuring that technology serves us rather than is weaponized against us. In conclusion, the ethical use of technology safeguards our safety, privacy, and autonomy. By passing such an ordinance, we set the standard for ethical technology use, inspiring other communities to do the same, and contributing to a more humane and just society. Thank you.
Mr. Downey, thank you very much for your time tonight. Uh, Member Wright has a question.
Thank you. When did Denver pass this?
Fairly recently. I just was reading in the news in the last couple of weeks that they've deployed 100 cameras citywide, which is obviously connected to a centralized database that records and does AI interpretation of every license plate that goes by.
Did it say anything about facial recognition and withhold in that type of information?
I'm glad that you brought that up. Um, I think it's safe to say that today's license plate scanner is tomorrow's facial recognition scanner, and that, that would be Wednesday's zone and district access and shopping permission control and monitor, and it would be connected to your banking system. And by Thursday, of course, it would be a vaccine passport that would allow you to effectively live in the city, and, um, by the weekend, of course, genocide.
All right, thank you.
Member Russell?
Um, could council, could you provide a copy of that, um, what you're suggesting to city council?
Yes.
All right, I'd appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Seeing none. Mr. Downey, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Up next is Rick Emoheinz. Um, I can't see what the topic given is. Good evening, Mr. Emoheinz. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Rick Emoheinz, and it's best to say that I'm in the Belv, Belview Park neighborhood. Good evening. Uh, first, I wish to thank each member of this council for their service to Inglewood. The time and focus necessary to make sound and careful decisions benefit each citizen of this city. I'm coming to you tonight both as a citizen and as a member of the Inglewood Sustainability Commission to express my, to express my support for the possible bond to fund improvements of various parks, Inglewood Recreation Center, Pirate's Cove, as well as upgrades needed for the Bellevue Park petting zoo. In 1966, Inglewood was blessed to receive funding from the sale of land for Cinderella City to create and expand parks in the city. Without these funds, many of us would not enjoy these parks as we do today. Naturally, parks need maintenance, upkeep, and upgrades to address uses, use deterioration, as well as additional accessibility and climate change. We owe it to those who had the wisdom to invest in parks to maintain and improve these parks. As I said, I come to you from two positions. My role as a member of the Sustainability Commission sees a unique opportunity to reshape parks to better address a changing climate by creating and adding natural areas, which allow for native plants and pollinators so desperately needed at this time. My role as citizen in Inglewood understands the values and values the quality of life our parks bring us. The open green areas allow for us to relax, play, and enjoy a bit of outdoors in an urban area. They also offer others outside of Inglewood the opportunity to see and enjoy what is special about our town. I believe that we can do both. Neither would move, nothing would move forward on any of these changes to parks without numerous opportunities for neighbors to have input and buy-in on any proposed changes. Citizens can determine how much or how little natural areas would be introduced into their park. I hope that some out-of-the-box thinking takes place also, where, whereby natural areas can become, for instance, areas of learning about our environment, where informational signage, as well as areas for nature walks. I believe the bond funds our future as a city to both address the needs of our parks and public facilities while also making a statement of the importance of taking care of our precious resources. I encourage you to allow the bond to move forward onto the November ballot and allow the citizens of Inglewood to decide. Thank you.
Mr. Emoheinz, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of council?
Actually, just a quick question. I, I'm not sure if you're aware of the different levels of, um, funding that we're thinking about as part of the bond measures. Is there any, uh, from your perspective, do you, do you have one level over the other in terms of what you would prioritize?
Uh, not, not particularly.
Okay, just want to see it on the ballot, though.
I do, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Mr. Emoheinz, for your time. Uh, no further questions, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Up next is Gary Kozak, um, with the topic given, but I can't read it. Sorry, Mr. Kozak.
No problems on traffic. Gary Kozak, Oxford and Lepan Street.
Thank you.
Council members, you know I've been in front of you about traffic studies and all this. Well, thanks to the Police Department and doing a traffic count, uh, they put the meter on speeding up on Fox and Oxford westbound. In just short of two weeks, there was 51,586 vehicles go westbound. That didn't include eastbound, and that's on top of the hill. If you move down now, we've got the meter in front of the recreation center, thanks to the police chief and the police department. The traffic will be traveling faster there because of the downhill, coming down the hill and stuff like this. But you also have to remember, Metal Gold Dairy has over 1,000 employees. They come 24 hours a day. There's two shifts, and in fact, in some cases, three shifts. And then they come in with their vehicles, they get out of the vehicles, and then they get into the trucks, and they take the trucks out, go do the deliveries, and then bring the trucks back in, and then they get in their cars and they leave. Well, if you calc, calculate that, that's 4,000 more people, cars just from there. Okay, you're Oxford, I mean, uh, Oxford, uh, the new apartment house that just opened, Vista, just opened, okay? They are not anywhere near being full yet. That's going to add more traffic down there on the Windermere Exchange. Okay? My problem is the recreation center sitting there, and the kids want to come across. They're wearing vests now, trying to be seen going across there, and you've already seen my videos. Okay? And this is just in, short of two weeks, because they put the meter on at eight o'clock, so they missed out on the first eight hours before then they removed that one. And I know sitting back and watching the meters go red all the time, there is an element of that meter not being totally accurate, but we've had one person that was doing over 60 miles an hour. There's over 30-some people that were doing 50 miles an hour and above. Okay? Not only do we have the kids, but remember, we've got the intersection down there where people are going to the recreation, are going to the light rail and stuff, and we have blind people as well. So I really want you to consider it. I am asking the Police Department if they will move that to a northbound or the eastbound, so we can see what the eastbound traffic is, and accumulate and get a total number over a two-week period. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kozak, for your time tonight. Any questions? Seeing none. Mr. Kozak, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Up next is Chris Dewis, here to speak about Inglewood. Good evening, Mr. Dewis. If you could just state your name and your address?
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Chris Dewis, Bellevue and Broadway. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm a 65-year resident. I've worked with previous, previous city councils, helping the Business Improvement District, and worked with the Chamber of Commerce for years. I hate having to come here tonight, as I have a million other things I could be doing. But the public needs to know how important this is to be vigilant. First off, I want to reach out and thank, a big thank you to Sam Watson for checking in on me today, as we have had a 40-year relationship. I was involved in a serious incident Saturday night coming home from dinner. As I drove past the Walmart Saturday night, I heard people screaming. I saw people fighting. I drove over to see what was going on and to help. I yelled out my window to the man, to a man to stop. The big guy ran over and started punching me through my window. While I was trying to get out of my car, I was punched at least seven times in the head. I finally got out and started defending myself. The man then jumped into the back seat of my Cadillac convertible and started messing with my passenger. I grabbed him and pulled him out of the car. He landed on the ground and hit his head. I thought I killed him. He left in an ambulance. He's very lucky to be alive. I'm lucky he didn't have a knife. Citizens of Inglewood need to know what's going on out there on the streets. I was totally caught off guard. I found out the guy started all this, has been hanging around Inglewood for a long time. He is known to have mental health issues. He is in desperate need of help. Where, where are the co-responders and the mental, mental health workers that our taxpayers are paying for? Two of them 40 hours a week. Maybe the police need mandatory training on mental health. Thank you again for Chief Watson for checking on my injuries. The man went to the hospital and was released as he fought with the doctors. This man should be arrested without me pressing charges. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dewis, thank you very much for your time tonight. Member Russell, first question?
Um, did anybody call the police when all of this was going on?
Oh, yeah. There was like, when, when I, I was so busy involved in the fight, um, and then when he, when I pulled him out of the car and he hit his head, I didn't have a chance to look. But then when I, I don't know how long it took, my adrenaline was pumping so fast, all of a sudden, there was like 20 people and seven cops and, um, fire engines and ambulances when I stopped.
So are you doing okay now?
Yeah, I mean, I'm used to, I mean, I'm good. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Wright?
First thing, and I'm glad you're okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Um, do you know if this man was charged with anything?
No. At the time, they asked me if I wanted to press charges, and I said I wasn't sure, so I'm still debating on that. I want the guy to get help, and if I do press charges, I want it to be at the city level. I want it to be at the municipal level, so he can get help through the facilities that we have.
Okay, and have the police given you that option?
I haven't really talked to them about it yet. I'm, I'm going to have a discussion with Mr. Watson later on.
Okay, okay. And is there anything else, I guess, that the city or the council can offer you, I guess, or that you're asking?
Well, no, I'm just lucky, and I just want people to be aware that, you know, it's kind of dangerous when you let down your guard. I mean, uh, I didn't expect that to happen so fast. I mean, uh, I've been in bar fights and all that kind of stuff. I grew up with bikers and stuff, but, I mean, the minute you let your guard down, it can happen in an instant, and that's what happened that day.
Did he appear to be a homeless man, Chris?
Excuse me?
Was he a homeless person?
Yeah, he's homeless. He hangs out at the fountains.
Okay.
From my investigation, he hangs out at the fountains. He has a pit bull. They took his pit bull, but he's, he got out of the hospital, and now he's like hanging out. Today, he was hanging out at the fountains with his dog.
He was.
But the dog's in need, and he's in need, and the guy doesn't even know what day it is.
And, and this happened, what day?
Uh, Saturday night.
Saturday, and it was extremely hot. Okay.
Maybe seven o'clock or something.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Member Pring?
Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Lewis, and I too am glad that you're doing okay or hanging in there.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I really appreciate you not only bringing the incident forward, but approaching it with such compassion for, um, someone who attacked you. Um, I think that it's very important to remember to have that sense of humanity.
Right.
Um, so I guess my question to you is, throughout this incident or afterwards, have you had the chance to ask the Police Department about the co-responder presence or lack thereof?
No, I really haven't had a chance yet. I've been working in the mountains, and I just got back. Um, but when I heard the people screaming and fighting, I had to stop and do something, because they, they were in trouble themselves. So they needed help. So then I helped them, and then, I mean, I pulled up, and I de, um, I changed the situation by me pulling up, and the guy started walking away, and then he came after me. So, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
I sort of saved them in a way, but.
Mr. Dewis, uh, one question for me. Um, you made a comment that you liked the, uh, for that man to get help at the city level. Uh, do you have any examples of who it is that you would rather have the help administered from the city? Can you kind of clarify what you mean by that?
The help, for the help for the guy?
Yes.
Well, uh, mental health, some mental health work. Don't we have mental, don't we have some people that we pay that ride around with the cops, mental health workers?
The co-responder program?
Co-responders.
Okay, so that's, that's the level that you mean in terms of just within the Police Department?
Yeah, what's in the Police Department, and then I think there's other things that the city can offer to help somebody like that.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Mr. Dewis.
You're welcome.
With no further questions, thank you very much for your time tonight.
You're welcome, thank you.
Up next is Regan Benson, here to speak about homelessness. Uh, non-response.
Good evening, council. Uh, gentlemen, you look wonderful in blue, all three of you. I just wanted to comment on that. So this is a place where I have to come air my grievances, especially with the Police Department, because you can't file complaints, because the complaints go in the trash. So I noticed that we've got Assistant Chief of Police and the Chief of Police of Inglewood sitting in the back of the room, so that's awesome. So this is the official place where you come make your complaints with the Police Department, since they throw them in the trash. So I want to start off with my first complaint. On Saturday, prior to Mr. Dewis's incident, I had to make a call to 911. There was a man laying on the sidewalk, an elderly gentleman, non-responsive, and I called 911, and instead of getting the ambulance and the fire department, the cops showed up and started copping an attitude with me. And then I guess the cop decided to go ahead and summons the ambulance, and you know how I know that this happened? Because the fire truck showed up five minutes after the ambulance, almost 15 minutes later. You know why that's happening? Because the dispatchers at the Inglewood Police Department play games. You know about those games, Joe, where you have people call Inglewood Dispatch and go, "I want to press charges on Regan Benson." And then all of a sudden, the Police Department has all these resources to go ahead and move forward with a criminal case on Regan Benson, but Mr. Dewis gets assaulted and nobody gets criminally charged. Isn't that fascinating, how this Police Department works? So that was the first 911 call on Saturday. And then coincidentally, I happened to be there when that happened to Mr. Dewis. I didn't see the actual attack, but I saw the police response and presence, and no one, absolutely no one should have to put up with physical assault. That is not okay in a civilized society, regardless if the person is housed or not. However, this particular individual is chronic homeless in Inglewood. He has been for more than nine months. He's not getting case management. The police are not responding appropriately, again, with co-response. The police are not responding appropriately, again, with co-response and all health response. You hold a million dollars over everybody's head with your tri-city's homelessness, you got nothing to show for it, and still, no crisis response in weather-related crises that put people in situations that they should not be in. This is a matter of public safety. The city continues to not address it and go after people that expose it and stand here and tell you about it. And what do you want to do? You want to shut down public comment. Isn't that interesting? Also, Denver taxpayers, for anybody that doesn't know, we foot the bill in more than twenty-five million dollars a year for you to have emergency services in Inglewood, Colorado. So for those of you that don't like Denver residents at your city council meeting...
Miss Benson, your three-minute to wrap. Thank you very much for your time, Ms. Benson. Any, uh, any questions for Ms. Benson?
I, I have a question, please. You said that you had called nine-one-one about a gentleman on the sidewalk?
That's correct.
Where was that at?
On Inglewood Parkway in a coma.
So near Walmart, where the second...
No, near King Supers.
King Supers, thank you. And did ambulance and, and finally respond?
Yes.
And was the man taken away by ambulance?
Yeah, eventually. I think they were gonna release him back out on the sidewalk, so I needed to make sure to sit there and make sure that he was gonna be transported to the hospital because everybody knew this individual by name. And I'm pretty sure that's why the lack of response was to begin with.
So I, I will assume he was a homeless gentleman that...
Actually, he wasn't.
He was not.
He was an elderly gentleman on his way home. He was dehydrated.
Okay, okay, thank you.
With no further questions, thank you very much for your time, Ms. Benson. Up next is Cody Phelps here to talk about the Parks Bond. Good evening. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
To a, okay, sorry, I've never done public comment. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Cody Phelps, Lincoln and Cornell. Uh, I'm a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, I'm appointed by the City Council. Appreciate you having me here today. Just here to talk in support of the Parks Bond Initiative. Um, I do believe that a great example of why we need this, uh, bond initiative to pass is Cushing Park. Um, if you all have been by it lately, you'll see what happens when we have failed infrastructure in our parks. The grass over there is near dead due to a massive failure of a twenty-year-old irrigation system. This is not just Cushing Park. This is several of our parks in Inglewood. We do not have the ability to keep up with maintenance in our parks without capital construction funds. In addition to the bulk of the funds going towards, um, maintenance and upkeep, uh, some of these funds will go towards improving our Parks and Recreation amenities. Um, I know there are certain, um, portions of that that people may question. Um, I do encourage people to remember that Parks and Recreation facilities not only are crucial to everyday citizens' health and well-being, uh, but the enjoyment of the city. Um, we want our youth of the city to be out in our Parks and Recreation facilities, and in order to do that, we need to provide safe and updated attractions for them to go to. In addition, a large portion of the Parks Bond that's been discussed has been, um, the native plants. Um, I will point out that none of the plans are final. Um, there's still plenty of room for discussion on all of those plans. Um, a, an example earlier was given Depot Park. Um, I don't think that's a prime example for our parks due to the fact that that was roughly a hillside that was no more than a right-of-way, uh, that was turned into a native plant garden. Um, also remind everyone that weeds do happen in Kentucky bluegrass as well. Irrigation's very expensive, water's very expensive. Um, and so there is no free, uh, way of doing landscaping in our parks. Um, native plants will add some beauty to our parks while also taking away some space that's not usable, um, to the everyday user and converting it to be something that is more attractive, um, and welcoming to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, Mr. Phelps. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you for coming tonight. Up next is Kristen Beard here to speak about the Parks. Good evening, Ms. Beard. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Yes, my name is Kristen Beard. I think in honor of Pride Month, I would like to say my pronouns are she/her, and I live near Logan and Cornell. I, again, tonight, am representing multiple families in the Bay's Logan neighborhood that could not get childcare and join me tonight. Uh, but we do all share the same opinion, and I'm here, again, to talk about the Parks Bond. Um, if you remember last week or two weeks ago, I shared about why I wanted City Council to support the Parks Bond. And tonight, I wanted to share with you some ports, some points of why I want you to support the full fifty-million-dollar proposal and move it to the ballot. Some of you have mentioned that you would support like a thirty-five or a forty-million-dollar version of this bond versus a fifty-million-dollar version. And when we look at the numbers from Parks and Rec, the difference we're really talking about is like roughly thirty dollars a year. Um, I just think it would be such a travesty if someone was really looking forward to the splash pad or, you know, their neighborhood pocket park finally getting something done to it, and we decided not to do it over thirty dollars a year. It just feels like such a small, whoops, sorry, it's kind of nerve-wracking up here, um, such a small amount of money in comparison to what we would get for ten million dollars. I would just hate kind of for that to happen and for those people to then be having to pay this tax every year for the next twenty years, but their park didn't get touched, right? It just doesn't feel fair. I feel like it's all or nothing, like, let's do it, let's just go for it. You know, I know that one of you had, I came in at the tail end of a presentation, you had mentioned inflation, you know, and maybe not wanting to support something because people are struggling for money. And this would really offer up so many free or inexpensive options, right? It's like three dollars to go to the Inglewood Rec Center. So imagine if we now had pickleball courts and if there was a surf simulator, a new sauna, right? That's like a really affordable way for somebody to go relax that maybe couldn't afford to go somewhere else. Um, and, or it's the splash pad and their park's getting touched, right? And then that being free, just more activities for them to do. So, um, again, I just want to say, let's go, let's do this. I think we should do it in full, and I really want to thank you guys for your time again.
Ms. Beard, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions? Seeing none, Ms. Beard, thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Up next is Idemay Nickel here to speak about the museum. Good evening, Ms. Nickel. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Um, my name's Idemay Nickel, and I live at forty-seven forty South Lupin Street in Inglewood. I'm here tonight to talk about the historic Inglewood Museum, and I have some, uh, brochures on that little table on the back. So any of you that would like one, please take it and take it home and read it. Join us for a grand opening and ribbon cutting this Saturday on June twenty-second at, uh, ten AM to two PM. Our ribbon cutting will be at eleven AM. And enjoy snacks, refreshments, indoor prizes. And for those who don't know where it is, it's right across the hall from where we are, and you'll see the museum's sign as you go out the door. And for those who don't know, it's located at the, on the second floor, um, of the Inglewood City Building. And a stick-around to tour the museum's first exhibit, the history of Cinderella City, the very famous mall from Cinderella City. We have put that up on the walls. I think you will be surprised by what you see. And then we have a little theater. So please visit the theater in the simulation of the mall, uh, how it was raised and how it was lowered and all the in-between. Um, we are producing the Cinderella City project, and be sure to check, check out the museum's merchandise that's also for sale. And so we hope to see as many of you as you we can on Saturday. And, uh, we don't have a really large area, and hopefully in the future, we can get more area. But we're very, very thankful for what you have given us. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nickel. Any questions from members of council? Seeing none, Ms. Nickel, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Kathy Naughton with no topic given. Hello, Ms. Naughton. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Kathy Naughton, Jason and Union. Um, I believe that you have gotten some information regarding the charter initiative statement that came from Stephanie Carlisle, probably late last week. Um, I'm here to share some rationale on both of those initiatives. So, we believe Inglewood voters should have the right to directly elect their mayor. Inglewood and Grand Junction are the only two remaining Colorado cities among the top twenty-five by population that still have mayors elected by their council rather than their voters. The intent of this citizens-initiated charter amendment aims to give Inglewood voters the right to directly elect the mayor of the city of Inglewood without altering the current mayoral authorities or terms in office. This amendment would require the mayor to be directly elected by Inglewood voters, starting with the general municipal election in twenty-twenty-five. The elected mayor will replace the third-at-large council member position whose term expires in twenty-twenty-five. The other citizen-initiated, um, amendment, this citizen-initiated charter amendment safeguards the interests of Inglewood voters and their right to elect city council representation by imposing stricter requirements for the appointment of vacated positions on the Inglewood City Council. Additionally, this amendment clarifies existing Inglewood law if a vacancy cannot be fulfilled by successful city council vote within thirty days. Specifically, this amendment aims to mandate a supermajority vote of at least seventy-five percent of the remaining council members for vacancy appointments, replacing the current requirement of a simple majority. Strengthens existing language by requiring the council reach a successful vote on vacancy appointments within thirty days. And if a successful vote cannot be reached by council within thirty days, and if a vacancy occurs more than six months before any general municipal election, a special, special election will be held for the respective unexpired term. And prevents a special election from occurring less than six months from a general municipal election to fulfill, to fill a vacancy.
Anything else, Ms. Naughton?
That's it.
Ms. Naughton, thank you very much for your time. Any questions for members of council? Seeing none, thank you for your time tonight. Uh, and last up tonight is Michael Chisholm here to speak about the bond issue. Good evening, Mr. Chisholm. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
I am, uh, Michael Chisholm. I live on the three-thousandth block of South Cherokee, uh, resident of Inglewood. So thank you, council members and Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I have just a few comments, and, uh, basically, I want to let you know that I am supportive of the bond that is being considered, uh, for infrastructure improvements and Parks and Recreation. I want to get more involved in that process because I know it hasn't been finalized, so I would like to, uh, chime in on some of the details that are evolving. But generally, I think it's, it's a great idea, and I think it's, uh, it's a tribute to Inglewood that we're moving forward in this regard. I think our Parks and Rec do a fantastic job. Uh, I, I have been impressed with their responsiveness to anything I've ever asked them. I'm the chairperson of the Sustainability Commission and, um, usually communicate informally either through the committee or individually, but I, I have nothing but good things to say about them. One of the things that's emerging, and it started to emerge tonight, is some kind of debate over how much is enough and are pollinator gardens going to invade our green space? And, um, I could make light of it, but I don't want, uh, a debate in Inglewood to be one side against the other over Kentucky bluegrass versus pollinator gardens or native species. I hope council sees this simply as a design challenge. I think Parks and Recreation has wonderful expertise. They know what they're doing. I don't know that anybody's talking about putting native grasses and plants in the middle of a soccer field. It's reasonableness. There are pockets within our parks today that have trouble growing grass, so those pockets could be landscaped to use native species. Um, I think council should simply be asking Parks and Rec, what percentage are we talking about and what's the design and what's the rationale? And I'm sure you'll get an answer. So I, I really hope there's not a big contentious debate brewing out there over the Kentucky bluegrass people versus the Colorado-scaping people. There's no need for that kind of competition or, or problem. There's plenty of room in the parks and in the planning to use native grasses and plants. And that's, that's really all I have to say, so thanks for listening.
Mr. Chisholm, thank you very much for your time tonight. Member Russell has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm, for, um, the presentation. Could you repeat those three questions that you said that council should ask the Parks and Rec Department?
Oh, sure. Um, wh-what I'm saying is, council should view this as a design challenge, and council should simply say, to Parks and Recreation, give us the rationale and the final specifics on the design. And if they say, this area is hard to grow grass, it's on the edge of the parking lot, it'd make a nice walkway, there's a rationale there. So I, I think council should hear a rationale of where, when and why and how much. And I'm sure you'll get an answer.
Right, and I appreciate that, that, because I, I want to ask those questions.
Great.
So I got, what is the percentage, what is the design in? Did you put, what is the cost also?
Yeah, and how much water are you gonna save? I mean, we know Depot Park is, Park is already saving water. It wouldn't be hard for them to project that if we do this design, we'll be able to save X amount of water in the course of a year. And that could be a ballpark, but I think people understand that and appreciate it when it's presented that way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, with no further questions, thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight, Mr. Chisholm. And with that, that concludes unscheduled public comment. Member Wright, when you're ready, you're able to give a response.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming. It seems when I'm responding, I get a lot of people coming to speak about the parks. So, um, first of all, I will try to answer some of Kathleen's, um, questions. Um, number one, with fifty-two eighty. They are a five-oh-one-C-three and they are a church. So they did not have to get permission. Um, it was an existing church, they bought it. As far as I'm concerned, there is no PUD in the works. I've not heard anything about it, and nothing's come to cancel.
Member, I, I, no interruptions, please. You had your time, go ahead, go ahead, Member Wright.
I, I will put in the, a council request regarding the safe distance from schools, but I do not believe they're required to have any. Um, as far as the waiving building fees, it is an upcoming vote, so I will not say anything on my personal beliefs on that. I will address everybody, um, that spoke about our Parks, um, bond coming up right now. I appreciate everything that has been said. Everything has been thoughtful. People have done their research, people care. Um, all of this council cares about the parks, and we are being very thoughtful about everything that is being done. It's not being rushed. There has been a lot of discussion. It is a lot of money. Um, there was something said about thirty dollars a year. We also had our commissioner come today and discuss, um, money that the county needs also. So, in thinking that, there are a lot of different government groups that need money, and we have to be thoughtful for that also because Peter needs thirty a year, Paul needs thirty a year, so I think there's thought into that also. But, um, ultimately, it will be the voters that will be deciding on if, you know, if this bond goes through or not. But we'll continue listening and we'll be continuing having the conversations on this, and decisions will be made, and ultimately, it'll be the voters that decide. Mr.... Mr. Downey, we did ask, I believe, I don't know if he's here or not, but if he could send that information to council. It is something that I would like to hear a little bit more about. Mr. Kozak, I will put in a council request to see about having the eastbound side of Oxford tested also for the traffic study. Mr. Dewis and Ms. Benson, I would like to find out more information, if it's possible, if we could have a council request to get the call information on those two calls from Saturday. And C, I would very much like to work with Mr. Dewis on the gentleman that assaulted him, to see if it was a mental health issue with the man that assaulted him. And like he said, if there's things that could be done with that gentleman. If we could, along with that, I guess I have a lot of council requests from this today, to see what we have in place for, I know we had cold weather, to see what we have in place for the hot weather for people that are homeless, to keep them hydrated and that type of thing. Let me look here. I think the rest are the parks. Oh, Ms. Idemay, I will be at the ribbon cutting. I'm looking forward to it. I have it on the calendar also. There's been a lot of work that has gone in to our museum. And Cinderella City holds a lot of fond memories for me. Remember when they used to have an Easter bunny there, and I took my kids to get their picture taken? So, I'm looking forward to it. Ms. Naughton, the initiatives. Today's the first that I've received anything official about it. I will read about it. This is the, you know, what our country's built on, on citizens being able to bring initiatives and the people able to vote on things. So, everybody else, I just want to say thank you, and thank you for coming to council and speaking. And again, looks like you will be voting on these initiatives, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Member Wright. Actually, just a little bit of clarification. Just want to make sure that we capture the council request. Safe school distancing, eastbound traffic signal, any resources for hot weather shelter?
Yes.
Mental health issue?
And see what the option is for Mr. Dewis, for the man that assaulted him.
And then the call information on?
On the first call that it sounded like happened.
Anything else? Did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Okay. Member Russell?
I would like, I think on Ms. Bailey, there were like four questions that she asked. And so, it was, I actually didn't get them all written down.
I think I got them all.
Okay. And then, also, I had a council request on... Mr. Kozak, you got that one already. Can, actually, I think that I would like the information looked into about the dispatcher not immediately sending an ambulance when someone calls. I think that's problematic. So, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Member Ward?
I'd like to enter a council request regarding noxious weeds and how the city deals with weeds that are on the noxious weed list for the state. And then, secondarily, specific to Depot Park, I'd like to have it inspected for any potential weeds that should have been exterminated, but were not.
All right. Thank you so much, Member Ward. Actually, since, just because Ms. Bailey is in attendance tonight, I believe there may not be four questions, but the safe distances was one of one. The R1(c) zoning, and just allowing that as part of Movement 5280. So, there's like a discrepancy there. There was the PUD for 5280, which I believe?
Right, and the wave building fees.
But that seems like more of a comment than a question, since that's coming up for vote tonight. So, that was just my comment on that. So, Ms. Bailey, thank you very much. Ms. Bailey, thank you very much for your time. You've already had. Any more outbursts, Ms. Bailey, and I would ask you to leave. Same with you, Ms. Benson.
So, she wanted to know, safe distances from the school, the 5280 first, I don't have them all. Can you email them to us, please?
And we'll make sure we'll get them. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Member Wright. And with that, that concludes unscheduled public comment. Do we want a break before we continue, or just move forward? Just move forward? Okay. I believe we only have one item pulled for consent, just 9(c)(3). Or 9(c)(3)? Any others? All right. With that, then, can I get a motion to approve 9(a)(1)(2), 9(b)(1), and 9(c)(1)(2)(4) and (5)?
Still moved?
Thank you. Member Ward, could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you very much. 9(c)(3). Do we have Director of Engineering, Tim, Deputy Director, Tim Hoss? Member Wright, you pulled the item. Do you have a question, or do you want me to read it? Actually, Tim, did you get the question?
I do have the question.
Oh, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the question. It was about the, you want to ask it, or?
If the first 30% of the design contract is costing us just under $500,000, what is the remaining 70% going to cost the city?
Okay, so this initial study is not all design fee. There's a lot of data they need to collect as far as survey and soils data and things. So, about half of the contract is collecting data, and the other half is the 30% design. So, we're about $250 for the design. The final design, we won't know for sure until we get this initial data and do this initial design work to understand what we're getting into. So, we're at this point thinking that the final design will probably be at least a million, if not a million and a half. But the goal of this initial work is to have the consultant help us search for grant funding for the final design and the construction. So, we're hoping the city won't pay nearly that amount. There'll be, at most, maybe half of that amount, but we're hoping to get even more than that. So, we're looking to get a grant for the design and the construction of the final project.
Well, and I saw on here, so the public outreach and grant writing support was $60,000.
Correct. That's part of this contract.
And that was one of my concerns, because, so we're having to pay outside sources for grant surgeon, grant, it said grant writing, support, and public outreach. So, we have communications and stuff like that, that should be doing the outreach, but we're still paying it. And then, I mean, this body didn't want to have outside or hire any kind of grant writing. It perplexes me that we're paying this much money when we have our own communications group that could be doing the outreach. The city decided to do their own grant writing. I don't know. Sorry. My other question is, within this, and I thought I saw it, but I couldn't find it again. Are we paying this company to do the topography also? Or are we supplying it to them because we already have it?
So, this will actually be on-the-ground surveying work. It won't be based on topography. We'll actually have to get actual survey grades and elevations to do the design. So, this won't just be based on topography. They do have to do a survey, which is part of the scope of this work.
Okay, and all the GIS stuff that we've done, we can't provide that, or it has to?
Oh, we can certainly provide it, but they're going to need more detailed information to get the plans. We're looking forward to be able to verify the design and be able to move forward with the feasibility of the project. So, yeah, they'll need a little more detailed data than just the GIS stuff we have. We'll certainly provide it, but they'll get a little bit more to make sure we get what we need.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Member Russell?
Thank you. So, this, some of this, there's a total $500,000 of ARPA funds that may be available, and it may... So, the bottom line, is it going to take that whole $500,000 just to design this?
So, it's more of a study and a design. We'll be looking, we have to get all the data collected and kind of understand what it's going to take to build the full rail trails, what we're trying to do with this funding. Because in order to apply for grants, you really need those 30% plans to show that the project's feasible and that you do have a valid or a project that can be built for the cost you say it's going to be built. So, the intent is to leverage this funding into actual, you know, funding for the final design and construction. We'll take this 500 and hopefully turn it into several million dollars that we can get back to the city to actually build the rail trail.
Okay. But if we don't get any grants, then the $500,000 was just already spent on all of this, 30%?
I suppose, yeah, we still have the 30% design plans. We can continue on forward. And we'd more than likely look to phase it at that point. If we can't get a full grant, we'll probably try to phase it into certain sections or something. But we kind of need to get a look at the entire corridor there to understand how we can phase it and what the easier parts are, and maybe the things we could do as maybe part of a development or something. We can leverage some of that, you know? So, we're trying to understand what it's going to take to build a rail trail, and then understand how we can maybe get some other sources of funding and development contributions, maybe to continue with the construction.
So, all of this really comes out of different funds than, I mean, we had a lot of projects down here on Broadway that have just kind of gone away because there's no money available. I mean, that is possible, that this could happen with this also, correct?
I mean, there's potential, yeah. If we don't get any grant funding, and it's not chosen to be funded in the capital improvement program, there certainly, yeah, it could just be... The 30% plans will be valuable no matter what. Eventually, we'll, you know, at some point, there'll be funding be available or something break loose. But the plans, it won't be money spent in vain. We'll be able to use these plans eventually to, you know, if we don't get grants in the first round, perhaps the second round, we keep looking, we find a developer comes in, we can team with them to do something. So, these plans will be valuable no matter what we do. We'll definitely be able to use them to build at least a portion of the rail trail.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for members of council? Cina, can I get a motion to approve 9(c)(3)?
Move to approve 9(c)(3).
Thank you, Member Prang. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any further comments? Cina, can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. No public hearing items for tonight. Moving on to 11(a)(1). This is approval of ordinance on first reading the development impact fees. We have Deputy City Manager, Tim Dodd. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, this is, I believe, the third official time that we are before you with this. We've had two study sessions on this item. I do want to thank a few people. I want to thank Brian Eishem, our Director of Planning, in our Community Development Department, and our City Attorney, Tamara Niles, for their work on developing the ordinance. Also, Assistant City Attorney, Sergio Ramirez. I'd also like to thank our consultant, Carson Bies, and also Brad Anderson, the Deputy Director of Parks, Recreation, Library, and Golf, who also partnered with me on this. And then, I also want to thank all the departments that contributed this. So, as you recall, this is something, again, that we've had a few study sessions on. I believe while there wasn't a consensus, there was a council direction to draft an ordinance that included impact fees for the four areas that were discussed previously. So, when I say four, two of them were police, and then one was for parks, and one was for, sorry, for transportation under Public Works. And so, really, tonight is just, I'm going to give a really quick overview of what they are and what we're doing. And then, I'll show you the slide that has the proposed fees, which, again, were based on the methodologies that have been described previously and are also included in your packet. For your reference, I did include the consultant's report and PowerPoint, as well as this short cover PowerPoint. So, just as a reminder, there is specific enabling legislation in the state of Colorado, and there also are similar statutes in other states across the United States. But effectively, what these are is for one-time payments, and they're for new development and for capital-only, not for operational costs. Governments may waive impact fees on developments for low and moderate income housing. That was not specifically addressed in this, although, of course, it is something that could be amended by council. Impact fee requirements in Colorado, just again, as reminders, are meant to be one-time. They're not taxes, but they're considered contractual arrangements to build growth-related infrastructure. Obviously, Inglewood's a unique position that we're primarily built out. There are a lot of cities that have, including cities in this area, that have this, that are growing substantially, that have land they've maybe annexed or things like that. They meet growth-related infrastructure needs. And so, the general basic concept is the more people using services, maybe the more services that are needed, such as new centers or new facilities and things like that. And so, again, the proposed fees that we have in the ordinance were just based on the consultant's reports and the methodologies that were included. And so, the presentation tonight was just meant to be short because, again, this is something that's come before you a few times. And so, tonight, it's really just meant to see if you'd like to take any action on this.
Deputy State Manager, thank you very much for your time. Member Russell, you have the first question.
Thank you. I'm really kind of wondering why this came forward because I didn't think that the last time we had the discussion, there was consensus to bring it forward.
Do you want to, anything for staff, or?
I thought we believed that there was enough support of council to bring something forward for consideration. There was definitely not unanimous, but I thought there was enough support to have this drafted.
Agree. That was my recollection as well. I mean, we've had three study sessions and three regular on this, and I don't think we've ever said we don't want to see this come back. We've always had the assumption it was coming back.
Right. Thank you, City Manager. Yeah, just not any clarification on exactly what this council is willing to do, so. Go ahead, Member Russell.
But tonight, it's coming back for a vote.
Correct. All right. Any other questions for members of council? Member Noonan Camp?
I have a question. I'm looking at the actual legislation, and maybe you can tell me. In the presentation from the consultant, they said that the fees could be waived for affordable housing projects. Is that written in the current legislation, or was that something we would have to do retroactively?
I would be happy to answer that question. It is specifically written into the proposed legislation that the city manager's designate may waive or reduce fees for affordable housing projects. So, it essentially gives the city manager's designate discretion to waive those fees for certain projects.
But wouldn't mandate it? The council wouldn't have that decision. Can you tell me where that's at in the bill?
It's on page 6 of the 71 pages of the specific agenda item. It's under the proposed new municipal code section 4-9-1, subsection B, subsection 3.
Great. Thank you.
Member Prang?
Thank you. Just a quick question for clarification. In Chapter 9, and it's under 491, Development Impact Fees, Section A, is, does this include adding ADUs onto a property? Like, if you're, you don't have one currently, and you're going to, your intention is to add an ADU onto your property, would the single-family unit fees be applicable?
It would apply to all new construction, as long as it falls within one of the development types. So, if it is a single-family new construction unit, then that's the fee that would apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy City Manager Dodd. My question is just around some of the specific numbers. On the police impact fee, it's broken down between facilities and there's, well, the one number comes to make up, to make up that final number, includes both facilities and vehicles. Could somebody figure out, before we go to vote on this, I might have an amendment, what it would be to just do the vehicles and not the facility fee, since that's paid for by a bond? I can understand a development fee for something that's going to actually be an added service, but for something that's already been paid for, so I would just like those, that broken out.
Thanks, Mayor Protem, for the question. So, just looking at these fees, so, okay, yeah, so you're, see what you're saying? Yeah, we, the consultant had, as you recall, two different methodologies for the two different fees. So, we can, I can try to do that calculation right now. So, you're asking to take out the facility but keep the vehicles? Is that correct, or?
That is correct, yeah.
While we give you time, Tim, are there any other questions for members of council? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
I have a question about the fee structure, following up on Member Prang's question. So, for residential development, the single-family total all-in fee is about $3,800 per unit. And so, that would be for a single-family home or for an ADU. And the multifamily fee is about $2,100. Is that also per unit or per full development?
That is per unit, and it's... That is per unit and it's a little bit clearer on the ordinance itself, um, which is section three, page four of the ordinance, which it says residential development fees per unit.
Great.
Whereas the non-residential development is fees per 1,000 square feet.
And that would be everything from a duplex to 300 units?
Yes, yeah, per, per unit.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions for members of council or, Tim, do you still need more time on figuring out the facility versus, uh, vehicle?
Happy to take other questions, but yeah, it'll take me a few minutes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Sean.
Mayor, thanks. Uh, just wanted to point out that we can, we can, I was just consulting with the city attorney, we can, if you want to amend that, because that was a theme that we heard, um, from council, you can amend that without that part of the fee. I mean, without, I mean, I understand you want the calculation and we can probably get that, but you could also make an amendment if it passes, it could come back on second reading with that amendment.
Thank you. And I'm fine doing it that way, too. If you don't want to do all the calculations, it could be complicated and then if we get it wrong, then it's going to be more complicated.
Probably be easier if that's okay, just so I don't make a mistake. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions for members of council? All right, Sina, does someone want to make a motion on 11A1 just to kick this off?
I move to approve 11A1.
Thank you. Member Noonan Camp? Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. All right, any further comments or amendments? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Um, I will not be supporting this. The levels of service, um, were completely, the levels of service for police impact fees was done in 2017. We, I have asked repeatedly, two or three times, that I want to address issues with the level of police staffing and I want a study session on this and we're moving forward with this with old, um, fees. And the other thing, I, I'm just going to say this, I'm going to put it out there because I'm tired of it. We didn't have consensus at the last meeting and this was changed because it was done in one-on-ones. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, I would respond to that. I do remember having consensus on this and I know there were three that were supportive of moving it forward and then I was a, "I don't know how I'm going to vote on it, but I would like to see it come back as an ordinance." Um, so I, I do remember that quite clearly. I, I do have an amendment. Mayor, um, I move to remove the police facility fee from the, uh, police impact fee.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So we're going to remove the police facility fee, um, and keep the vehicle fee, okay?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp.
And I'll just give a little justification for that. The, the impact fee, the just, for me, the, the logic behind an impact fee is to pay for, um, new and future things and the building, the police building has been paid for, we have a bond, it's being paid back. Um, it will be, you know, presumably included in taxes of new buildings that come in, so it'd already be, so I feel like that's double, that, that hits me as double dipping. Um, and I remember the consultant explained, explained it in his own way that it was, you know, was legal and allowed, but I still am not comfortable with it. The vehicle impact fee makes sense because as population increases or, um, new businesses move in, then you will have to hire more police and, and those kind of things and, and expand, you know, expand the police force. So I think the, 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 uh, vehicle fee makes sense to me.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Anyone, Member Russell, go ahead. Or is this from the previous?
That's from previous.
Uh, Member Wright, go ahead.
Could, since I wasn't at all of these and probably wasn't there when the consultant was there, could facilities go towards police headcount?
No, it could not.
Okay.
We can't actually, state law, um, requires that we can't use impact fees for staffing.
Okay.
Interestingly, when I met with police and road calls last, last week, they said, "Okay, we've got all these new apartments, what are you doing to try to help us with the new growth that's, you know, occurring because of these new apartments?" So certainly, I think they were very interested in this vehicle issue.
Okay, well, maybe they should pay for staffing. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wright. All right, with no further comments, we are vote.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Member Ward. I just, on the amendment? No, not on the amendment.
On the amendment, yes. So we are voting right now on the amendment to remove police facility fee from the fee schedule, or the development fee schedule here, so. All right, as long as we're all clear, all right, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Member Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, four ayes and three nays.
All right. And with that, any other amendments? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
I want to raise something in response to Member Prang. So when I was reviewing this, I don't know if I realized it included ADUs either, which I thought was interesting. Um, and I wonder, you know, as we're considering the right way to think about impact fees, adding a structure, especially if it's an internal ADU or maybe you're making addition onto your existing home, and adding a very significant fee to maybe a family who's trying to build something for a mother-in-law, when it's already quite expensive to build something like this, doesn't feel like the, the right solution to me for what we're trying to accomplish here. Um, and so I wonder if there is appetite on the council to carve out ADUs from this, if they're being built by Inglewood residents. Um, unfortunately, I don't have an amendment prepared because again, I was not aware of this before this evening. And what, you know, what building fee would it go back to? You know, would it just revert to what we had before? Um, I wonder if maybe we could carve it out and then we could revisit the ADU fees separately from tonight when we have a chance for staff to look at it. But that one doesn't feel like it fits with the others to me for residential development.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Actually, I, I do want to respond to that. I do want us to take action on that aspect of it because we are considering ADUs as part of our affordable housing plan, so I'm wondering if there's a way that we can potentially even just, uh, classify ADUs under, uh, potentially waiving that aspect of it for affordable housing. I'm not sure, obviously, we didn't ask our city attorney to look into this in, into, in advance in terms of what is possible, but I do, in, in terms of us trying to bring more affordable housing into the area and ADUs being a, a portion of that, just kind of curious what your, uh, legal expertise is or opinion is on this.
But it, it would be fairly simple to, uh, add, uh, an exemption for ADUs from the definition of single-family to state, um, it's a single-dwelling unit, um, except that it does not include ADUs which are exempt from payment of development impact fees. Would be a very simple, straightforward way to do it.
Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
My question is then, would there be any building fees that we would be able to charge for ADUs that we would still need to if we exempt them from this specific increase?
If I could, the, all the building, plumbing, um, electrical, framing, all of the other permit fees would have to be paid, um, but that, this would, since this ordinance is only dealing with ADUs, you could just, you know, move to exclude ADUs and vote on that motion, we can bring that language back to you.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. Um, with that in mind, then I would like to propose a motion to exclude ADUs from this ordinance.
Second. Thank you, Member Noonan Camp and Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, Member Prang, question or comment?
Is it the time to discuss, and discuss?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Your proposal, okay. Um, so I'm not sure that I'm in support of completely excluding ADUs, but I'm wondering if a, um, lesser fee could apply. And I say that because the, the impact fees are, um, we want to implement them to kind of pay into the future of infrastructure improvements, et cetera. So if you're, if you have a property and you're adding onto it, that's a burden on our infrastructure. Um, so I'm not sure that I feel comfortable completely removing it, but would consider a lesser fee, um, that's not the full, close to 3,800 that we would be looking at for single-family homes.
Thank you, Member Prang. Uh, Member Noonan Camp?
I'll just respond to that and say, I think that's a very reasonable perspective, Member Prang. The reason I brought the amendment is, one, uh, ADUs tend to just be quite low-density, they tend to house, you know, one to two people, they're not very large, so the impact is just lower than a regular single-family home or obviously multi-unit developments. But then also, I almost view the elimination of an impact fee as an incentive to say, "We would like to encourage you to think about, um, living in more creative ways to help make space for our neighbors who need places to live and because we would like to see that happening in our community, we will actually incentivize you by not charging this fee." It's kind of a different way to look at it. Um, and so yes, while everything has impact, I view this the same way that we, I hope, would reduce or eliminate impact fees for affordable housing developments. Those people who will live in an affordable housing development will still definitely have impact on our infrastructure, but it is worth, I think, the incentive to make that exchange in my perspective, the way that the city does business. Um, and because we do not have mass amounts of ADUs being built and we hear that the number one deterrent for ADU construction in the city is cost, this feels like a reasonable, uh, step to take in my opinion.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any further, go ahead, Member Ward.
The reason why I won't be voting for this amendment is because this body made a deliberate decision when we passed Code Next not to require owner occupancy for ADUs. And so the most likely outcome here is, in my opinion, an ADU to be built by an investor who doesn't have to pay the same tax that he would normally have to pay for a single-family residential property. And I just can't support that, so, uh, it will be a no on that amendment.
Thank you, Member Ward. Any further comments? All right, with that, let's vote on the amendment to exclude ADUs.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Nay.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show, four nays and three yeses. And defeated.
Thank you so much, City Clerk. Mayor Pro Tem?
My final amendment, uh, amendment that I wanted to propose here is, and if I remember right, the consultant said that this would, it was totally within, um, council's discretion as to the total amount of the impact fees. Um, I would like to reduce the remaining impact fees, um, and cut them by 50%. I just think these are too high, too big. Number one, for the multimodal, because, um, we have, it was based on a huge multimodal plan that we are not anywhere near executing. And so I think that we're, we're basing this on a bunch of work that's never going to, to get done. Um, and then on the, the parks fee, I just, uh, I also think that these, these fees are, again, we're, you know, if we consider the parks bond, we're, we have a, a plan to pay for these things. It does make sense that some amount should be paid for, uh, by new development, but I would like to propose that we, um, make a motion that we reduce these by, uh, both the parks and the multimodal fee by 50%.
Mayor Pro Tem, so we're just motion to reduce by 50% just the parks and rec and the multimodal?
Yeah, isn't that all?
For both single-family, multi-family and the non-residential?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah.
For all categories?
All categories, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Could I get a second?
Point of clarification. So, s- single-family, multi-family, parks and rec and multimodal, take 50% off those two and police remain the same?
Correct.
Okay.
Police, police has already been amended to.
It's already been amended, yeah, sorry.
Yes, okay.
But for this motion, yes, it'd just be parks and rec and multimodal, 50% of that value across residential and non-residential.
And, and the commercial, industrial and office services?
Correct, correct.
That would remain the same?
No, that actually would be halved.
That would be halved as well.
Parks is zero, so it only would affect multi, multimodal in that category.
Okay, and can you tell me the reasoning for the multimodal reduction?
Uh, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem, you had?
Yeah, um, the reasoning was when he, uh, when the consultant explained it, um, he based it off of our walk-and-wheel plan, I believe, which is a 20 or $30 million plan. And then this will be a certain percentage based on the growth of the city of that. I don't think we're anywhere, you know, we're gonna, I don't think we're, have any expectation of actually completing that, that plan to that level. Um, and so I don't think it makes sense to charge that high of a fee for money that the rest of the citizens are not going to end up expending to accomplish that plan. And it's similar for parks. If we, if we, you know, issue a $50 million bond and then we charge this huge park fee, well, all, a bunch of the improvements will already have been paid for. So I'm, I'm, you know, the, the number is a bit arbitrary, but the, the two reasons for it are, I think these fees are too high, I'm afraid they're going to hurt development and, um, and also I don't think they can be justified by the work that we're actually going to end up doing.
My other question would be then, and Daryl's advocate, what if the bond for the parks does not go through? Then are we sitting back here discussing raising that parks portion through or do we put this through? I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just asking the hard question.
Member Wright, I think that's, that's just an unknown at this point. So I think, I think here is just the, the justification for removing the 50%, at least to Mayor Pro Tem is, for the reasons that he gave, so.
Point of order, can we get a second so that we can actually debate the amendment?
Oh, did we not? I thought we did.
No.
I'm sorry. Um, you're right, we don't have a second. Could I get a second? Sorry about that.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ma- Member Ward. All right, apologies, thanks for catching that, Member Noonan Camp. Member Russell, go ahead.
So I have a problem with lowering the parks and rec, um, because in all-new development, all of the developers are paying the park and loofah fee and cutting that by 50%, it's not going to change them. There's no land in here to buy parks. And so I definitely don't think that we should lower, um, the parks and rec fee by 50%.
Uh, thank you, Member Russell. Member Ward?
I support any reduction in these fees, which I will ultimately be voting no on. So I would encourage anyone who opposes the fees to try to keep them as low as possible and vote no, uh, yes on this amendment.
Thank you, Member Ward. I'll, I'll chime in, I will be voting against this motion. I do believe that, um, well, I'll, I'll give a larger statement when we get the entire, uh, motion to, to vote, but I would be voting for this one's, uh, voting no against this one specifically, so. Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate, Member Anderson, uh, wanting to try to strike a balance here. My concern with the amendment is, by your own admission, the number is arbitrary, which is that the last-minute slashing it in half for kind of no reason doesn't feel great to me, especially when we did so much research to find what is a number that we could use that would still enable development. Um, and when I go back to the developer or the consultant's, um, chart, Inglewood would still be in the middle and our friends to the south have double the fees we would have if we pass this and they're still experiencing plenty of development. And so I'm not sure, um, and I know, you know, there are, um, different shades of friendliness to development on this council. I tend to think we need good partners in the private sector and I would never want to do something that would exclude their ability to help us solve problems here, but I don't see this as being that. And so I will not be supporting the amendment, but I appreciate the intention behind it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, anything else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add a couple of things. I, I get that it's arbitrary. I, I'm doing it because the, um, the consultant said it was within our discretion to lower these. And secondly, because I would like to get this to a place where I can, where I can support it. So I, I get it, you know, I get the disagreement with it, but, um, that's, that's my reasoning behind it.
Thank you, Member Anderson.
Sorry, can I?
Go ahead.
Respond?
Yes.
I also would like to see this pass, and so, I would like to, us to get it to a place where we can support it, and, you know, if there's another number, I think we can have that conversation. Unfortunately, the arguments also around, "We don't need this money for parks, we don't need this money for multimodal," I'm not there with you on. I don't have this assumption that we're just not gonna do the plans that we have. But also, we have, you know, low-hanging fruit, like pedestrian bridges for the light rail that we currently cannot fund. And so, even if we don't fund the whole plan, we can't even fund some of it, half of it. So, I think, like, you know, and we look at our general fund, we are, you know, in our CIP, we are giving money to parks. We are funding multimodal out of our general fund. We could be doing it from this, and so, even if it doesn't fund the entire thing, it would be a meaningful difference for residents who are living in this new construction. And so, again, I can't get there on the 50%.
Yeah, actually, so, I guess this would be a good time for me to kind of state my case on this. So, I think, yes, I think there's a lot of development, or at least a lot of what we're trying to do with the rail trail. We just talked about the rail trail, and how we don't have the funding potentially to do a lot of what we would like to do, and try to navigate exactly where the best place for the rail trail would be. That's something we've been talking about for many years, and we haven't been able to fund it. And so, that's one area that we need to do. Walk-and-wheel has been a big thing that we've been talking about for many years, and we haven't been able to fund that either. And that's something that this can help with. We've always spoken in the past about how we would like our developers to pay their fair share within the city in terms of just the development impacts that their new residential are bringing to the city. This can solve for some of that. The other aspect of it is that, we always talk about affordable housing. This might be the nugget to actually make the affordable housing projects a little bit more feasible within our city. If they can put a project in place that does not require these development fees, I think that that's a plus for the city as well. So, I think there's multi-layers aspect of this that I want to see happen within the city. And as Member Noonan Camp correctly pointed out, our, currently, we're, our development fees are $260, right? And that's the lowest within the cities that they mentioned here. Littleton to the north, or to the south of us is at $71.88 for development fees. This puts us at $37.98 for single families, single-family residential. We, Westminster, and Orvett are each over $2,000. So, we have been, this has waited way too long for us to actually make, do something with this. So, I am in favor of finally doing some sort of impact fees that would actually benefit our new residents, but also those that are currently living here within the city. So, Mayor Protam, I see that your light's back on.
Yeah, could, would, would it be favorable if we, if I changed that to 70? Could we find a middle ground, you know?
Seventy?
Seventy, yeah, key, or, sorry, 70% of the total, reducing it by 30%?
Can you do some quick math of what the numbers would actually be?
Sure.
You might have to find a different second if you...
I could be interested.
But, and again, we are talking about just parks...
I'm thinking most, I have less concern about the industrial, commercial, and office, but single-family would, the multimodal would be 1317. The 777 for the parks and rec for single-family, that's just an example of one. So, I'd put it 2,000 plus whatever police reduces by, which, you know, is a significant portion. So, it would make a single-family home, instead of being 4,000, closer to 2,000 or 2,500, which just, it feels closer to right, to me. That's, that's where I'm...
All right, so, 70% of the current number, so not a 70% reduction, that's 70% of that number, okay. Across both residential and non-residential developments.
Correct.
Perfect. Member Noonan Camp?
So, that was my question. It would be residential and the commercial?
Correct.
Well, non-residential.
Residential, non-residential, yeah.
Because there's industrial, commercial, and office within that bucket.
Gotcha, thank you.
Member Prang?
Thank you. I think the city is taking a bold step in putting this before us. I think it's a new funding stream that, as Member Noonan Camp pointed out, you know, it's lesser amounts that we're taking out of the general fund. I don't think we should be slicing and dicing numbers at this point. The numbers presented to us were based on research. We are still in the middle of the range of what cities around us charge, and I just, I think that it should be supported as is with the dollar amounts.
Thank you. So, based off of what I'm hearing, I will be voting in support of the 70%.
We'll need to change them, we'll need to...
Oh, wait, we haven't done that yet, so...
I think we need to vote the motion down, and then I'll propose the next one.
Yeah, let's do that first. Okay. So, did you want to withdraw your...
How about if I just withdraw my second?
Yeah, I was gonna say, just withdraw the second.
And I'll amend my motion to 70%, 70% of the total. If I could get a second on that version.
I will second the 70%. All right, comments? So, go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
We're talking about a lot of numbers tonight, but at the end of the day, the number that matters the most is four. And if there are four people who think that this should move forward, and are you comfortable, Mayor Protam Anderson, sharing, is this a blocker for you? If we do not see this reduction, will you be in support of this tonight?
It is a blocker for me, and I'm hesitant to say that, because I don't want to, you know, to hold, hold something over you guys. I want you guys to vote at your conscience, how you are, but I'm trying to get this to a place where I can support it, so I appreciate you asking.
Can I ask one?
I don't know if you really answered the question, though.
Yeah, yes, I am. I'm not going to, okay, sorry. I will not vote on this ordinance if we do not get this, some, some level of reduction here to the 70% level.
And the 70% here.
70%, I'm gonna be happy with.
Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
I appreciate the willingness to be candid, because I'd always rather take half a loaf than nothing, so I will be supporting the amendment. Thank you very much.
And that's where I stand as well. Again, if this gets us to a place where we can raise our current development impact fees from $260 to $2,000 or $2,500, I would be in favor of that. I would prefer to be at the current number, but if we don't have the votes to pass it, then I would be willing to go down to the number, to the 70% number. So, that's why I would be voting in favor of the motion on the table to 70% of the current number, so. All right, anyone else?
And it's 70...
Go ahead, Member Wright.
I am so sorry.
Go ahead.
I apologize. So, it's single percent for, 70% for single and multifamily, correct?
And also, non-residential.
Industrial, commercial, and office of parks, rec, and multimodal, so two of those columns all the way down, the parks and rec and the multimodal.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, and with that, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Ciara?
Aye.
Let the record show, six ayes and one nay.
Thank you so much. Any other amendments? Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna try one more time here. I would like to offer an amendment on Section 3 of the bill, I believe it's Section 3, that in the same way that the City Manager's Designee can eliminate or reduce the fee for affordable housing developments, projects, excuse me, this is Section 2B3. City Managers Designee may waive or reduce fees for affordable housing projects. I would like to add, and accessory dwelling units, so that at City Manager's discretion, if there is an accessory dwelling unit being built by an Inglewood resident or for an affordable housing purpose, that we would have the flexibility within this ordinance to do so.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp.
Mayor, can I offer one comment?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I believe if we, if, if they were willing to enter into an agreement as, to make their ADU affordable at some level, the ordinance as written would, would allow that. We would have to enter into some kind of agreement, but they would, it would be similar to the agreements that are occurring now in Littleton and other cities that have affordability requirements.
Thank you. Do you want to add, do you have any further questions on that, or comments on that?
Sure, I would just, I want a maximum amount of flexibility, so then the question is, what do we consider affordable? What's the percentage? I would just like to add accessory dwelling units, if possible, because I do think it makes it clear, and especially gives us more freedom to say, you know, if this is an Inglewood resident who wants to do this, maybe even if they're not hitting a certain AMI, but they're not a developer, I'd like to have some discretion there.
All right, Mayor Protam?
Oh, sorry, left my line on. I'll second that, if we're looking for a second.
Yes, we are.
Second.
All right, so Mayor Protam and Member Noonan Camp, any, any comments? Member Ward?
I would actually strike that clause. I don't believe that these types of decisions should be made administratively. I think the body should be deciding, perhaps with the assistance of P&amp;Z, what affordable housing units or projects we choose to support or not support. I don't support the delegation of authority in this case, and therefore, I would not vote to make any change to that, other than striking that clause.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Noonan Camp?
While I appreciate your perspective, Member Ward, unfortunately, I just think that this is a decision that doesn't rise to the elevation of city council. I do think it's more administrative. It deserves to live where other administrative decisions are made, but the purpose of this amendment tonight is hopefully to get to some of Member Prang's concerns around the complete elimination of the ADU fee, but this would allow, that would reduce the fee, so maybe that there would be some flexibility to reduce the fees when it would make sense, and I have full confidence in our staff people to do that administratively.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any further comments? Actually, I'll weigh in. I'm not sure exactly, well, I know how I'm gonna vote on this. I'm gonna vote no on it, just because I, I, it, I understand what you're trying to do here, Member Noonan Camp, but I, I think it just complicates the issue a bit too much for me, and I'm looking to get to a place where we can get more votes. And so, for me, this, this is gonna be my reason to vote no, so. Any further comments? See, now, can we please vote?
Member Anderson, or, sorry, Mayor Protam Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Nay.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Mayor Ciara?
Nay.
Let the record show, four nays and three yeses.
I'm sorry, four nays and three yeses, correct?
We had three ayes, four nays.
Correct, all right. Thank you so much. All right, Member Ward?
I'd like to propose the amendment I just spoke about in 491B3. I'd like to strike the clause that begins with "except." Except the City Manager's Designee may waive or reduce fees for affordable housing projects, and instead substitute, except upon planning and zoning commission recommendation and council approval, fees may be waived for affordable housing projects.
Thank you, Member Ward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any comments? All right. I'll just chime in on this one as well. I'm gonna be voting no against, on this one. Member Ward, I understand what you're trying to do here, but I do, I am comfortable leaving that direction in the hands of staff, so. All right, and with that, can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Nay.
Member Noonan Camp?
Nay.
Member Prang?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Ciara?
Nay.
Let the record show, four nays and three ayes.
All right.
And I have one final amendment, Mayor.
Go ahead, Member Ward.
Same clause, just to strike without the insertion.
All right.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Same clause, just striking the provision that allows the waiver or reduction of fees for affordable housing projects. So, we would strike in 491B3, everything starting with "except." Except the City Manager's Designee may waive or reduce fees for affordable housing projects. This would require all projects to pay the development impact fees.
Second.
Thank you, Member Ward and Member Russell, for the second. All right, I think you know where I stand, Member Ward, so, just to keep it quick.
Just trying to craft good public policy.
Thank you, Member Ward. Anyone else? See, now, can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Nay.
Member Noonan Camp?
Nay.
Member Prang?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Ciara?
Nay.
Let the record show, four nays and three ayes.
All right, I am out of ink, so, do we have anything else? Think that might be a omen, so. All right, and with that, the motion on the table is, the motion as amended is to remove police facility fee. The parks and rec and multimodal, reduce that to 70% of the current number. And I believe that's it, just those two, two amendments. Do I have that correct? Go ahead and...
Mayor, I was going to give you the exact numbers to make sure that we have the fee schedule. I'm over here doing some math, so. So, I have reduced the parks and recreation and multimodal fees for all development types by 30%, so that it's 70% of what the original was, and then we took out the police facility fee from the police fee. So, from my calculations and Tim's calculations as well, single-family parks and rec would be 777, police $31.88, multimodal 1317.40 for a total of $2,126.28. Multifamily would be 490.70, parks and rec, $20.12 for police, multimodal 634.20 for a total of $1,145.2. Non-residential development, industrial, police $9.11, multimodal 562.10 for a total of 571.21. Commercial, police $46.76, multimodal 28.91. I haven't done the math yet to add those together. And then, office services, police $20.92, and multimodal dropped to $1,283.80. So, about $1,300 there.
Could you say that number again, the last one?
For office and services, police would be $20.92. The vast majority of the police fee was the facility fee, not vehicles, so it pretty, it's dropped it all to a very small amount. So, office services, police $20.92, and multimodal would be $1,283.80.
Okay, I misheard that you were reading that one for office and not commercial, so it's like, that number seems like 30% of the original number, but, no, I got it. Thank you so much. City Attorney Niles, Mayor Protam, and then Member Ward?
Yeah, I just want to thank council for working with me on this. I'm, I'm supportive of the, the final, the final numbers here. I recognize it's a pretty drastic change, and maybe not exactly what you, some of you were hoping for, but I do feel, I feel comfortable with it, I guess I could say.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Member Ward?
I said this during the study session, so I'll try to keep it brief. There's been a trend in Colorado due to Tabor of governments, both at a state and local level, finding that is increasingly difficult for them to raise taxes. And so, in lieu of going to their taxpayers and asking for a tax increase, they concoct fees, and in my opinion, if it quacks like a tax, and it walks like a tax, it is a tax. So, because I have a principled objection to fees that are charged that do not, in my opinion, benefit the payer of the fee in a manner that would otherwise be required by a fee, I will be a no vote on this tonight.
Thank you, Member Ward. Anyone else? So, we, oh, go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
I'm just going to voice my support. Obviously, this is not exactly what I was hoping to get. I still think this is a disservice to Inglewood residents who want to build ADUs in Inglewood, but it's better than where we started, and so, I'll take it. And that is the legislative process, not always getting what you want, but the beauty of having a diverse set of voices on this dais means that the city of Inglewood is ultimately better represented and better served, and so, I appreciate the compromise and the partnership that I saw on the dais tonight, which we don't always see, both in this body or those at our federal level, and so, it's nice to see. I think it's hard to raise fees. No one wants to be the bad guy. I respectfully disagree with Member Ward's analysis here, and also, we have a responsibility to ensure that we are funding long-term generational infrastructure and impact needs in our communities. And I think, I'm really grateful to staff for bringing forward this work of this consultant to help us understand, and ultimately, for us to be the ones to make the decision about if we are at the right level within the metro area, and I feel like we're in a much better spot than where we started. It should this pass, hopefully it will. And while we never want to make, like I said, our private sector partners pay more than they should, I think this is a fair, reasonable compromise that puts us in a really competitive spot in the metro area, which is exactly where Inglewood should be to thrive. So, I appreciate the work of staff and the council tonight, and hopefully, we'll have a yes vote.
Yeah, thank you very much, Member Noonan Camp. Yeah, I'll be happy to vote for this. You know, I would have preferred a, a larger number that was brought forth by the consultant, but this is something that I can live with, so definitely better than where we're currently at. And with that, the motion on the table as amended, to remove the police facility fee, as well as reduce the parks and rec to 70% of that number across all development types, as well as multimodal transportation, 70% of that number. So, that is what we're voting on, and with that, can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Nay.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Mayor Ciara?
Aye.
Let the record show, four ayes and three nays.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Mayor, could I have a five-minute break?
Yeah, we can take a five-minute break. What time is it? Nine oh five? If we could be back at nine ten? All right, thank you, everyone. Members of council, if you could please be seated. All right, everyone, we are now back. Moving on to 11C1, this is the resolution to waive building fees for nonprofits serving people experiencing homelessness. We have Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd for this item. Hello again, Tim.
Good evening again. Yeah, so as you mentioned, excuse me, Mayor, we have before tonight is a resolution for your consideration to waive fees for nonprofits that provide services to homelessness. Obviously, this is something that could be changed by council if you would like to, but the proposal from staff is just building fees. Obviously, there's other fees to consider as well. The purpose of why staff is bringing this for your consideration is, obviously, as you're all aware, the city did sign on to the Tri-Cities Homelessness Plan of Action a couple of years ago. And also, there is a mitigation of homelessness goal that's part of your strategic plan. And so the concept is that this may, if you think it does, fit, this concept may fit into the goals that you're working to achieve that are stated in both the strategic plan and the Tri-Cities Plan of Action that you've adopted. There are a few related actions, so these go back several years. And most of these do, and I believe the organization in all of these was Habitat for Humanity. These do all relate directly to housing. But similar to the action tonight, which may not apply to housing, these were focused on individuals who were housing vulnerable. So they weren't necessarily homeless, but they, if they qualified for these programs, they were at least in the housing vulnerable category. This did come before council multiple times. That may be a typo in 2007. Actually, I apologize for that. So 2007, 2008, 2014, and 2015. There's goals that you're all aware of that are included in both your strategic plan and the Tri-Cities Plan of Action. That's the stated goal that you see in italics right there for programs, initiatives, and coordination that are designed to help people experiencing homelessness while also mitigating the impact of homelessness in the larger community. Obviously, you're all aware the city does not provide direct services, so that the teeth, so to speak, that the city has to really move forward with some of these initiatives has to do with how we engage with others who do provide direct services, such as nonprofits. Also, as you're probably aware, there's over thirty-five nonprofits that we're aware of. There may be more. Change to Trend is a network of many of them, not all, but many of them, that meets on a weekly basis of service providers. There also are some nonprofits that provide these services that own buildings and some do not. So this would only apply, obviously, to buildings. If approved by council, there's eight different fees that would be waived. They're all building fees. They're based on categories involving funding that are included in your packet. Now, the waivers would be retroactive. However, I did do some research with our building division. When we scoped that to bring to council, we weren't sure if there were any that were paid. There were not. So even though, and again, that's to the knowledge of the research that I did, we'd have to double-check that, of course. But from what we understand, there were not any that were paid by organizations that would be exempt, starting on January 1st. Last thing I want to point out, too, about that is that, obviously, if it passed, it would go forward, and it would only apply, and this is in the resolution, but it would only apply to organizations that are registered as 501(c)(3) under the IRS code. So it would only apply to those organizations. And that's the presentation.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager. Any questions? Member Russell?
One of my questions is how many organizations and who would this impact? So is it eight organizations? I happen to see that in the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I apologize, Member Russell. No, it's eight different fees. So they're all building fees, but there are eight different fees that are basically just based on the amount of the cost, but they're all basically building fees. We don't actually, I think there's two organizations that we're aware of that we believe have 501(c)(3) status that may be either doing or have done building-type work in the past or may do it in the future. There may be others where we're unaware.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, just a question. So do we know who retroactively may be affected by this?
Thank you. So when we did research of the two organizations we believed may have qualified, neither one had pulled, to our knowledge, building fees, building permits from January 1st going forward. We wrote it retro because we weren't sure when we were writing it if there were any, but then as we did the research, it didn't appear that there were any.
So as we, so zero at this point?
That's what we believe, yes.
Okay. Now, we believe, okay. Thank you. Member Russell?
And how many people do we believe are going to do this going forward?
We think there's a possibility of two that we're aware of, but there could be ones that haven't even crossed our radar, so we don't know.
Do we know who they are?
The two that we're aware of that have been in the contact with the city for building work are Move-In 5280 and Bridge House Ready to Work.
Okay. And since you bring up 5280, are they building on their property, or is there a PUD or anything moving, going forward?
Thank you for the question, Member Russell. We're not aware of any imminent plans that they have to, you know, add on or convert the, I think there's a single-family house on the property that they've talked about converting. We have not received any plans from them about that. As you know, they were talking about doing overnight sheltering in that facility, and we did explain that our code would require that they go through a planned unit development process before undertaking that. But to our knowledge, they don't have any imminent plans to submit such plans.
And so those plans were really a result of severe weather shelter nights, not permanent housing. Is that correct?
No, that's incorrect, because they could actually do emergency sheltering, just like any other church, well, I should say religious facility in the city, under the ordinance that we already have in place for severe weather nights. As you know, you all allow that in churches with lots of restrictions. You have to have crash bars on the door, exit signs, fire watch at night if you don't have a sprinkler system or a sprinkler system. So they would be allowed to do that today if they can get all of the necessary building amendments to their, adjustments to their building.
So would any of those things involve code changes, land use changes?
No, they would not have to do anything to their zoning to be temporary emergency sheltering under our ordinance that we passed three or so years ago.
Right, I understand that, but what about if they wanted to do overnight shelters? Would that involve a zoning change?
Yes, our code would require them, because of their zoning, we would not recommend that they try to change the zoning that's there to something that would allow that. We would recommend a planned unit development, because otherwise we're spot zoning in the middle of a neighborhood, but a planned unit development or PUD would allow the city to put certain restrictions in terms of, any number of restrictions that would perhaps make it more tenable to the neighborhood. But the code would require them to do the PUD or a zone change. They could go for a zone change if they wanted to overnight shelter.
And there really have been no talks other than early on when they first moved in there?
Right. The city has not, the planning department has not had any, you know, discussions that I know of. They did have a development review team meeting. Gosh, I mean, it's been a year or more ago.
Okay, but nothing really since then?
Right.
And, I'm sorry, Deputy City Manager Dodd, who was the other organization?
Yeah, there was Bridge House. The program is ready to work, but the nonprofit is called Bridge House.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further questions for members of council? All right, see, now can I get a motion to approve 11C1?
Move to approve 11C1.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Any comments? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. I appreciate this, but I had a problem when we gave ARPA money to Cross Purposes, which involved the church building, and city used taxpayer money to remodel. I think it is very unwise for for the city council to appropriate taxpayer dollars to 501(c)(3)'s. They have other means of gaining funds. And so I will not support this at all, and I I'm not in favor of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anyone else? I'll weigh in as well. I'm gonna be voting against this as well. I think we still need to have more dialogue on the issue. I do believe that I can get there in terms of just waiving the fees in the future, but at this point, this is still a contentious issue, and I want to have a little bit more communication about the entire process before I'm ready to move forward. So for me, I will be voting against this tonight. All right, anyone else? And with that, can we please vote on 11C1?
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Nay.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Mayor Sierra?
Nay.
Let the record show, four nays and three ayes.
Thank you so much. And Deputy City Manager Dodd, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Maybe we can continue the dialogue in the future, but thanks again. All right, everyone, we're moving on to Mayor's Choices Executive Session for the purpose of discussing specialized details of security arrangements or investigations. City Attorney Niles, can you, since we haven't had this kind of discussion in an executive session before, can you be, can you elaborate on what can and can't be discussed as part of the executive session?
Certainly. CRS, Colorado Revise Statute 24-6-402, subsection 4D, provides that city council can have an executive session on specialized details of security arrangements or investigations, including defenses against terrorism, and including where disclosure of the matters might reveal information that could be used for the purpose of committing or avoiding prosecution for violation of the law. So we understand city council wanted to discuss some security arrangements at a city council meeting in response to some credible threats of violence to, regarding the city council meeting or that could occur at the city council meeting. council meeting or that could occur at the city council meeting. So it would be appropriate to discuss PD's investigation of those threats and why they determined them credible, and then the additional security arrangements regarding those threats, as well as the security plan to keep staff and city council safe during a council meeting.
Okay. Anything that can't be discussed? It sounds just like those two items can be discussed, but everything that falls outside of that purview cannot be discussed.
Right. So information that's otherwise open to the public or open record wouldn't be appropriate for executive session, including, for example, city costs of additional staffing. That would be in open record and so wouldn't be appropriate for executive session. There are a list of things that wouldn't be appropriate for executive session, but in general, anything that's open record or open to the public should be discussed here in an open session.
Okay, so keep it to security and specific details then about that. Okay, perfect. So, all right, so I move, so this is for the executive session for the purpose of discussing specialized detail of security arrangements or investigations. Actually, before we get there, were there any other questions before this? No? Okay. I move to go into executive session tonight for the purpose of discussing specialized details of security arrangements or investigations, 2464024D CRS. Present at the executive session are the following persons: Mayor Othaniel Sierra, Mayor Pro Tem Joe Anderson. Actually, can I take a pause here? Because, City Attorney Niles, I don't think that, I don't feel that we, it's necessary for us to go to executive session. So do I go through this process of reading this tonight, or should we have a conference? Because I'm the original motion, so I don't want to be the motion cell. Go ahead.
You have no obligation to make a motion to go into executive session if you don't believe we should go into executive session.
So I don't make the motion, but are members of council, how do I ask the members of council if they want to be part of this executive session? So just ask, do members of council want to be part of the, want to go into executive session tonight? I don't feel it's necessary, but I'll let each member of council weigh in. Go ahead, Member Russell.
So why don't you think that an executive session is necessary?
Based on the information that, my, so originally, when the executive session came up, when we discussed it a few weeks back, the specific questions that I have for executive session were around the costs. So that, I felt, was not going to be information that was going to be shared with the public. I thought we were going to have that conversation within executive session. Other aspects of it, I'm comfortable with what I've heard. So for me, it was really just around the cost, but that's already been shared with the public and is not able to, we won't be able to discuss that as part of the executive session. So that's my reason behind it, but...
Okay, thank you. And then my question is going to be, can, is the information about a credible threat, is it possible that would be information open to the public?
It is an appropriate subject for executive session. Could city council potentially choose to share that information with the public? Potentially, yes. But it is an investigation regarding terrorism, which is an appropriate subject for executive session. I'm not sure if I completely answered your question.
Yes, I think you did for right now, so thank you. Okay.
Member Prang?
Yes, I still have question marks as to why we have additional security and the impacts to the broader city when we pull staff potentially off from other duties to be here to protect us tonight. So I have questions, and while certain members of council may have all of the answers to that, none of that has been shared with the full body of council, which is why I originally asked about it. We're being asked to come into a situation that requires additional security without any true knowledge and details as to why, and that disturbs me as an individual council member.
Thank you, Member Prang. Member Wright, so, oh, go ahead, sorry. I just started chiming in. Go ahead.
Sorry, to piggyback, to Member Prang, my answers were not so much the safety plan, but the reasons why we had to have a safety plan and the cost associated for all the meetings that we had to have, both allied and any Inglewood extra PD staffing. So, and yes, I don't have the answers and anything we could disclose to the public without causing, violating, exactly.
Thank you, Member Wright. Mayor Pro Tem?
I, I'll be against this executive session. I have all of the answers that I need, and they did come, and what I have is the same that was sent to all of council on May 17th, so that's, to me, that was satisfactory.
All right. Do we, yeah, just way, right now, we have three that are in favor and...
I'm ready to go into executive session. In the, the feeling has been expressed that members of this body don't have the same information. I think it's particularly related to security, important for this body to collaborate on both what occurred, but also what the response was and whether or not we believe the response is appropriate. None of that discussion is appropriate for the public.
Correct. Thank you. All right, Member Noonan Camp?
The only information that I have is what was sent to all of council. That has been sufficient for me so far, but I'm happy to go to executive session to have the conversations that have been outlined, and the requests that have been made, I think they're perfectly reasonable.
Yep, that's fair. So I move to go into executive session tonight for the purpose of discussing specialized details of security arrangements or investigations, 2464024D. Present at the executive session are the following persons: Mayor Othaniel Sierra, Mayor Pro Tem Joe Anderson, council members Chelsea Noonan Camp, Tina Prang, Rita Russell, Steve Ward, Kim Wright, City Manager Sean Lewis, Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd, City Attorney Tamara Niles, Chief of Police Sam Watson, Deputy Chief of Police Vance Fender, I believe that's everyone. May I get a first on this?
So moved.
Thank you, Member Ward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Wright.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it also needs to be included that this is for security arrangements and investigation of security threats during city council meetings, just to ensure full compliance with the statute. It's what we discuss, but it needs to be in the motion as well.
Yeah, it wasn't on the, so for the purpose of discussing specialized details of security arrangements or investigations during city council meetings. Anything else? That's good?
So moved.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Wright, could you do a second?
Second.
Perfect. Can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Nay.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
The record shows six ayes and one nay.
All right, we will now exit this meeting and reconvene in the committee room here on the second floor. Thank you.
The time now is ten fifteen and the executive session has been concluded. Present at the executive sessions were the following persons: Mayor Othaniel Sierra, Mayor Pro Tem Joe Anderson, Councilmember Chelsea Noonencamp, Tina Prang, Rita Russell, Steve Ward, Kim Wright, City Manager Sean Lewis, Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd, City Attorney Tamara Niles, Chief of Police Sam Watson, Deputy Chief of Police Vance Fender. I move to close the executive session. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Member Wright, can we please vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonencamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Member Wright.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
The record shows seven ayes.
For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session and violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. All right, and we are now moving on, well, we're still in mayor's choice. So just to reiterate, I will be present this Saturday for the Inglewood Museum ribbon cutting. It starts at ten to two. I guess I just need to get clarification. I could reach out to Lindsay to find out the timing, but there will be a ribbon cutting. I plan on being here at ten AM, but I'm not sure if we were scheduling. It's at eleven?
Eleven.
Oh, there we go. So, but I hope to see you all there. And it's a big moment where the members of the museum have been looking to put this in place for many, many years. And so I'm glad that we finally got to that point. So if you're able to join us on Saturday from ten to two, we'd love to see you there and bask in the celebration. So thank you so much. Anyone else with some member's choice? Member Ward?
Just a brief report. Region nine opioid abatement task force met last week. I have been assigned to the, what is it, the continuing education workforce improvement initiative, which is allocating roughly a hundred thousand dollars in funds over the next two years to draw new employees to the treatment workforce and to provide continuing education for advancement for existing employees in the substance abuse treatment workforce. So that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Prang?
Thank you. I attended the Parks and Rec meeting last week. Had a great, we met out in Bates Park and were able to see some of the improvements, which were wonderful. It was nice to be outside in the park with all of our commission members. There was a robust discussion about the bond up and coming and happy to let everyone know that, you know, commissioner or board members were able to and did raise questions or concerns that they had about certain aspects of the bond. So staff did a really good job of handling any questions that popped up around that. I also want to make a council member's request to have the, a description of how communication occurs around threats made for city council meetings, how that is communicated out to all of councils so that they're aware of situations that have arisen before they arrive to city council meetings. And I think that was it. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Member Prang. Member Russell?
Thank you. I just wanted to announce that I'm having a town hall meeting on June twenty sixth here in the community room from seven to eight thirty PM. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Wright?
I'm not sure if I did it or if anybody did. So if I could add to the cost for the extra security that we've been requesting for this week, also for allied in our officers, can we have that as standing request as long as we have extra security and officers at council meetings? Can we just have that just a blanket request for now, please? Thank you so much.
Anyone else moving over to City Manager's report?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the questions tonight. Just wanted to announce that on June seventh, we were notified by Dr. Cog, that's the Denver Council Regional Government, that the city of Inglewood is a recipient of the 2024 Metrovision Award for the Code Next Project. The submission materials for the award included a lot of references to the updated code as well as the community engagement, which is, I think, what the award really was around. So I'd really just like to recognize council, the Inglewood Planning and Zoning Commission for extensive and, I know, challenging work that was associated with that, and just acknowledge the work and dedication of our Community Development Department under the leadership of Brad Power, Planning Manager Brian Isom, who was the project manager, and senior planners Brooke Bell and John Boebel, members of the project's staff team, Chris Brewster of MultiStudio and Matt Ashby of Ira's Associates helped with the applications. I want to thank them. If you are interested, the Metrovision Awards banquet, which the Inglewood has been represented at many times in the past, it's going to be held on August twenty eighth from six to nine PM at the Sewell Ballroom at the Denver Center for Performing Arts. And just let Krista know if you would like to attend that. It is on council calendar.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it's a great honor to be recognized. So thank you, City Manager. And with that, everyone, we are now adjourned. See you all next Monday. Have a good evening.